Thank you.
Welcome, welcome everybody to the second hearing of the committee's inquiry into the biodiversity conservation amendment biodiversity offset scheme bill 2024. I acknowledge the Gadigal people of the Orang nation, the traditional custodians of the lands on which we are meeting today. I pay my respects to elders past, present and celebrate the diversity of Aboriginal peoples and their ongoing cultures and connections to the lands and waters of New South Wales. I also acknowledge and pay my respects to any Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people joining us today. My name's Sue Higginson and I'm the Chair of the Committee. I ask everyone in the room to please turn their mobile phones to silent. Parliamentary privilege applies to witnesses in relation to the evidence they give today. However, it does not apply to what witnesses say outside of the hearing. I urge witnesses to be careful about making comments to the media or to others after completing their evidence. In addition, the Legislative Council has adopted rules to provide procedural fairness for inquiry participants. I encourage committee members and witnesses to be mindful of these procedures. Welcome and thank you to each of you for making the time to come and give evidence today. Could each witness please, starting from my left, please state your name, position, title and swear either an oath or an affirmation?
Thank you. My name is Jason Cookel. I'm the State Director, New South Wales and South Australia with Cement, Concrete and Aggregates Australia. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you.
My name is Claire Doherty. I'm Policy Director at the New South Wales Minerals Council. I'll give an affirmation. I solemnly and sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you.
I'm Stuart Ayers. I'm CEO of the Urban Development Institute of Australia, New South Wales. I swear that the evidence, that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you.
My name is Elizabeth York. I'm a Policy Manager for UDIA New South Wales and I swear that the evidence now about to be given to me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you, all of you. And would anybody like to start by making a short opening statement?
Yes, I think I've drawn that straw on behalf of all of us.
Please go ahead.
So I'll provide the short statement. Good afternoon. My name's the Honourable Stuart Ayers and I'm the CEO of UDIA New South Wales. I'm joined today by Elizabeth York, UDIA's Policy and Regional Manager, as well as Claire Doherty, the Policy Director at New South Wales Minerals Council and Jason Cookel from the, as the State Director for the Cement, Concrete and Aggregate Australia. We'd like to thank the committee for the opportunity to engage on the biodiversity conservation amendment bill 2024. Each of our organisations has made submissions and we welcome the engagement on our recommendations. Collectively, our organisations represent industries which are vital to the economic and social growth of New South Wales, including the housing, construction and mining sectors. Despite the fact our industries represent a comparatively low percentage of overall land clearing in New South Wales, we are nonetheless high volume participants in the biodiversity offset scheme as many of our members' projects trigger the scheme's thresholds. We share many of the same fundamental concerns about the proposed bill. Our view is that the bill jeopardises the government's ambitions and commitments, including delivering 377,000 new homes in the next five years to meet the New South Wales commitment under the National Housing Accord, achieving net zero by 2050, including through the delivery of renewable energy generation and transmission, and delivering infrastructure and construction projects necessary to support the state's growth, including $1 billion in improvement to roads across Western Sydney and regional New South Wales. For broader businesses, implications for all of the above sectors will have knock-on effects in terms of higher living costs, labour shortages and more expensive energy and a lack of access to vital infrastructure. Our message is clear and consistent, the complexity and ambiguity under the proposed biodiversity conservation act amendments combine to create a fundamental barrier for development and severely limit the ability to deliver new housing, jobs and infrastructure in locations where New South Wales needs them. Unfortunately, in its current state, the bill proposed would make the situation worse at a time when the New South Wales Government is seeking to deliver more houses under the five-year National Housing Accord than we have ever delivered in New South Wales history and when we need more jobs, infrastructure and economic growth to support our state. We consider the introduction of the BC Amendment Bill to be premature as there has not been sufficient consultation with stakeholders during the drafting of the bill and there is no information on how the provisions would be operationalised through regulation. Our experience is that the government has spent the last 12 months arriving at these positions without meaningful consultation and has now introduced the legislation without first testing the planned changes with key stakeholders, including the main users of the scheme, such as the industries that we represent. There has not been enough genuine consultation aimed at understanding the wider impacts of the policy changes that are currently being contemplated. Our position is that legislation should not proceed unless and until proposed regulations are developed through an exposure draft process with stakeholders and better regulation statements being produced and are provided at the same time and accompanying the bill, which is debated in the Parliament. We appreciate this does take time, but it's critical that we do get this detail right. I think it's fair to say that without those regulations, we can't support in the bill in its current form. We do thank you for the opportunity to appear today and go through some of the recommendations in our submission and we do welcome your questions.
Thank you. We will have this, we'll just share the question asking between us if that's okay and I might just start off. I'm just curious about, it's no mystery or surprise that there has been report after report after report identifying that biodiversity in New South Wales is on significant decline and that we are in trouble in some wide areas in terms of biodiversity conservation and health and many, many aspects of the environment are on extinction trajectories. And there's been a lot of reports about this and recent reports and there has been a number of reports, inquiries into the failings of the biodiversity offset scheme and many recommendations identifying, sorry, many findings of how it's failing and many recommendations of how to fix it. So I'm just curious about why you would be suggesting or that there isn't enough information about what this would do and the attempts this bill is trying to make to remedy a small part of those failings. Is that something you've contemplated about the other materials that is widely known and publicly available?
I'll make some comments, but I also recognise that there's multiple organisations being represented today. I think the first point I would say is that from a UDIA perspective, we recognise the need to coexist with biodiversity. Houses and the environment have to coexist in our communities. I think the main challenge that we see with the bill as it's currently proposed and what would be voted on in Parliament is that no member of Parliament would actually understand how this bill would be put into practice, primarily because the regulations that need to be established to allow the bill to be functional are not visible to anyone. So I don't think the question for us is, is to commentate on the decline of biodiversity across the state. It's more about commenting on the way in which the bill's presented and how it'll be presented to the Parliament. We, the challenge for parliamentarians is to find a regulatory setting that allows for housing to be built to meet the requirements there at the same time of providing suitable biodiversity protections.
I was going to say, I, I think what I'm trying to say is as well, and if you can, I, I know that you're about to comment and very much appreciate that. I think what I'm trying to say is, so the parts in the bill that go directly to trying to improve the identified existing failures in the system, it's not like there's a system, this bill is starting. We're talking about a system that's been in place for a decade now and this bill goes to trying to fix some of those. For example, the, you know, the hierarchy, the serious and irreversible impacts and those aspects of the bill. I think what I'm asking is, thank you, I think what I'm asking is, if you could please go to, what parts of the bill do you say in terms of those aspects that you believe there is not enough information in front of you to support what's being proposed? Very happy to go to you, Mr Cookel.
Thank you. I think it's probably important to put on the record that certainly CCAA and I, and I think others here and some of us, we've made joint submissions, we have identified in those submissions that we also concur that there are issues with the current legislation. So we're certainly not here to debate whether or not there is a need for change and a need for improvement. We would certainly concur what, and in support of what Stuart Ayers has just said, I, our issue is that the bill itself actually doesn't provide any of that information about how it intends to do that. And in fact, a number of aspects of the bill, it is entirely within the purview of the government to make those policy positions and, and either implement them or come back and consult with industry about those policy positions. So a number of those things don't actually necessarily need to be in an act. But as Stuart Ayers has already mentioned, without the regulations, we actually can't see how it's actually going to improve the very things that, that you mentioned and we'd like to see how that actually is going to work in practice. Many have made an attempt with this act and/or policies associated with it. Some haven't necessarily been successful and I think it's entirely fair and reasonable both to industry as well as the decision makings in Parliament that the regulations are visible before this bill is, is voted on.
Can I just say something as well?
Please do.
And maybe address your, your point directly too. You know, I think there have been a number of inquiries here. There's obviously been the BC Act review, which was undertaken by Ken Henry. But I think importantly, out of all of that, and in the report itself from the Henry review, they identified that from 2018 to 2021, more than 80% of the clearing undertaken in New South Wales was for agriculture and it was regulated or unregulated under the LLS Act, not the BC Act. So I think that's important and I know that our friends at The Farmers actually dispute those figures and so I'm not seeking to throw them under the bus. But importantly, you know, development is a very small proportion of the impacts on nature in New South Wales. So we need to remember that firstly. So whether the BOSS is the very highest priority in terms of making changes, you know, I would, I would question that. And then you need to also remember that because the BOSS requires all the impacts to be either avoided, mitigated or offset, our impacts actually come with compensation. So if there is some sort of gap there, it's not the whole value of what's being cleared. So that's important to remember as well. So the, the, the net impacts from the BOSS on nature are going to be a lot less significant than in other parts of the clearing economy. So that's important to remember. I think the other thing that's very important to remember is that there was very little quantitative analysis done through any of these processes that you're talking about, including the Henry review, on the actual outcomes of the BOSS. So there's really not a lot available to tell us what the BOSS is doing in terms of outcomes. And the government agencies will concede themselves that they don't know what standard the BOSS currently meets. This is a couple of weeks ago when we asked them verbally. So they will tell us that they don't know whether it meets a no net loss standard, whether it meets a nature positive standard, what standard the, the scheme actually currently meets. So it's really, it does seem really premature to be looking at what we're doing about the BOSS where we don't actually know what standard it currently meets. So I think in terms of information, it would be really good to understand that firstly. So that's, I think that's our answer to your question. Then the other part of it is really about what information we have about the government's intention in relation to these amendments. How do they intend, what, what results, the outcomes do they intend out of these amendments? How will they be operationalised? There's no, without the regulations, without a discussion paper, without something other than just the bare bones of the bill, we can't understand what they're intending to do through each of these amendments. So it's really important that we should have that and that, you know, should either come in the form of a better regulation statement, some sort of RIS, a discussion paper, something that fleshes out where they're intending to go with this. So they're talking particularly around the avoid mitigate, sorry, avoid minimise offset hierarchy. There is already an avoid minimise offset hierarchy in New South Wales. We're already required to avoid impacts where there are opportunities to do so, then to move to minimise and then only to offset residual impacts. So there's already good guidance in the biodiversity assessment method about how you are meant to utilise those opportunities to avoid impacts on biodiversity values. There's already good guidance in the BAM about what you're meant to do to minimise. So there's not really a clear need for these standards that we're talking about and if there is, it hasn't really been made out that that is the solution. We haven't really explored what are the problems in getting avoidance on projects. Our projects in the mining industry have fixed resources. We have really limited opportunities to avoid and it is about opportunities to avoid. It's not about the avoid minimise offset hierarchy, isn't about cutting your project in half and leaving half of that resource in the ground because that resource is owned by the state government. The royalties that come from it go back towards the state and go to communities in New South Wales. So that's not what avoid is about. It's not about setting up a red flag for protection of particular entities. Entities are protected through the listing system and through their potential listing as entities which need to be considered as serious and irreversible impact entities, not through requiring particular standards around avoidance. Avoidance doesn't come at different levels. There isn't a hierarchy of avoidance. It's about what are the opportunities in your particular project to avoid. It's going to be extremely difficult to codify that through standards. We don't have any document that will tell us how the government thinks they can codify avoidance through a standard. All of our industries here have different projects in different regions with different resources, in different circumstances. They all have different opportunities to avoid. How are we going to codify that into a standard which then becomes a strict standard that has to be adhered to? It really is something that needs to be fully unpacked through a proper consultation process to see whether it is something that can be codified, whether we can introduce standards. Our view is that if further guidance is required, then guidelines would be sufficient. There is no need for this amendment to the act. We shouldn't be amending the act unless we know that there is a good case for making that amendment. We shouldn't be making regulation which is not required. So that's, that's our answer to your question. I can, you know, as we go along, I'm sure I'll be able to address some of the other amendments in the bill, but many of them are premature in a similar way, without the background, the intention, the government's outcomes, without anything to tell us how it's going to be operationalised. Some of them are just unnecessary. For instance, the introduction of the provision around a transition of the BOSS to a nature positive standard and, and the, the drafting of a strategy, there's absolutely no need for this to be part of a regulatorship, to be part of the regulatory landscape. The government, if the government wants to transition the BOSS to a, a net positive, then they'd simply put together the strategy and then amend the legislation next year when they say that they are going to do at least two tranches of amendment of the legislation. So they'd be better to do that work, understand what standard the BOSS meets, consult with community stakeholders, allow the Parliament to have a better understanding of what it is that they want to do, complete the strategy, come back and change the legislation. There's no need for legislation. It's just a signal, it's not required for them to complete the strategy. There's a number of other examples in here that are very similar. They don't have the detail, they're premature and they may not be necessary in the long run after consultation.
Thank you. Yeah, please go ahead.
I, I might just add, I think from a housing perspective, this is, or from my, my perspective and UDIA's perspective, and I dare say that there are plenty of people who work in this building that feel the same way, that the creation of more homes in New South Wales is the single biggest social and economic challenge that is before the state. The New South Wales Government has set a clear housing target as part of the National Housing Accord and this bill creates a level of ambiguity that makes it harder to, to deliver those homes. In not an unsimilar way, the concept of zoned land also represents a resource to the state. This is the, the, these are the, the parts of land in our state where houses could be built. But that zoned land, it doesn't represent a complete use of that, that site, particularly if there are additional constraints on that. So it's really critical that we don't add more complexity and more ambiguity to a system that is already delivering nowhere near enough homes. And I've spent a lot of time in this building with bills being presented to the Parliament and the critique coming from oppositions at the time around those bills not being able to be assessed properly because you couldn't see how they would be operationalised because of the lack of regulations. From a UDIA perspective, and I think the, the message from the three organisations that are before you today, there's definitely a willingness to collaborate on those regulations, to understand how that they'll be implemented, where the constraints will be, understanding what the regulatory impact would look like. And then being able to provide guidance to allow the government and the Parliament to be able to create a system that allows industry to take place, homes to be built and suitable environment protections to take, to, to, to be in existence. But at the moment, if this bill went before the Parliament without that, without those regulations available to anyone, we, we wouldn't be able to answer those questions and I have to say fairly forthrightly, neither could you.
Yes.
If I may, Chair, just to pick up on a word that Mr Ayers said was uncertainty and that is, I guess that defines what this bill is for those looking to make investments, whether that's investments in quarries or housing or mining or whatever it might be. This, because a lot of the terms aren't actually defined well, there isn't definitions provided for terms such as biodiversity conservation measures, avoid minimise and offset hierarchy and so forth. If, if there isn't really clear definitions, then industry will pull back on, on their intentions around investment. And if the government is wanting to achieve all those homes, we actually need to see industry putting the money in to be able to actually achieve all those homes. And in our sector where we're providing the raw construction materials for homes, for new subdivision development, for the infrastructure, for renewable energy projects, we, and we know that in many cases for renewable energy projects, we just simply don't have enough quarry materials available to provide those materials where those renewable energy projects are located.
Thank you. So is it your proposition from what I hear, sorry to just interrupt, I hear what you're saying, is it your proposition therefore that there is an assumption that we will continue to lose biodiversity so that you or your sectors and your member groups can continue to loop, you know, use biodiversity or lose biodiversity as you go through the system and do the things that you're saying need delivering, housing, renewable energy projects? And you're saying the system currently now where you would just get to pay money into a fund where we don't currently, as Henry's identified, we don't really know how to acquit that money in a system because the rules are broken and there's no like for like, that that system is the one that you would prefer? We keep going as, as we are?
Not, not at all.
Okay.
In fact, I think we made the point that the government has actually proposed additional tranches of legislation to change the biodiversity conservation act next year and possibly even the year after. What we're saying is that this is premature, there needs to be more definitional work, there needs to be those regulations and we will absolutely work constructively with the government to actually try and make those, those changes. In, in answer to your question about the biodiversity specifically, in the case of quarries, I can say that it is relatively rare for us to want to buy those offsets. A, because they're incredibly expensive to do so. I met with one of our members just yesterday who estimates that they save more than a million dollars by doing it themselves and they brought land adjacent to their quarries and they're spending a lot of money on biodiversity, making sure they can meet all of their biodiversity offset obligations on that land. And of course, in the case of quarrying and, and mining as well, and Claire can speak to that, of course we rehabilitate as well. So we are, we're actually looking to leave the place ultimately better than we found it.
What do you say about the, the, sorry, no, my colleague has questions too. We've still got time. But what do we, what do you say to the fact that this part of the government's intended rollouts of reforms means that mining rehabilitation won't be able to be considered as an offset? As such, that rehabilitation will be a requirement, obviously, as you say, and you take pride in that rehabilitation of mine sites. What do you say about that will no longer be able to be used in the offset scheme?
Well, I'll probably defer to Claire because quarries and mines, quarries often have long lives.
Yeah.
Fifty, hundred years and so it's probably a little bit different and, and they're usually smaller in scale relatively speaking, so I'll defer to Claire.
Yeah. Look, I, I mean, we know, make no secret of the fact, we think it's a massive loss of opportunity for the environment. I mean, I think you know that, we came to the BOSS integrity inquiry, we produced evidence there about the success of mine rehab. So, you know, who else is restoring at large scale ecological communities in New South Wales? Really no one, other than the mining industry.
I think farmers would say they are too. I'm just saying that's what they would say.
Possibly at a small scale, you know, through the offsetting scheme. But, you know, who's doing active management, Chair? That's the issue because when you look at it, no one's really doing the active management actions under the BAM that can score you additional credits because it's not economic to do so. And that was one of the Henry review's findings, is you don't get enough credits for those actions to make it worthwhile. And we know that as an industry because we've committed to do active managements on our biodiversity offset sites and are out of pocket because of that. So we, we understand that, but no one else is restored, is really doing active management and restoring ecological communities. We're doing it, we're doing it across the state, we're doing it with a high level of success. We have sites that are recognisable and sustainable as communities in New South Wales.
But isn't that because your sector is, you know, having one of the most dramatic impacts on land, like permanently disfiguring landscapes and that sort of thing? Like, isn't that the, the best, the quid pro quo?
No, let me answer that. So, you know, what the Mining Act requires is that the rehab is safe, stable and non-polluting. So within that, there's a huge range of things that you can do. I could tell you there is a lot less risk and a lot less expense and a lot less, a lot shorter timeframe in putting back pasture. So, and there's also huge demand in communities to put back types of rehabilitation which are, will generate jobs and income for communities. And a lot of the impact is on derived native grasslands, so areas that were farmed prior to mining. So they have been profitable even though those are areas that now have to be offset. So it's not automatically a choice that there will be ecological restoration done on these sites. Without some sort of incentive, then I think that there will be less ecological restoration done on mine sites. Currently, under the act, there is this small incentive to undertake ecological restoration. But what you need to know is that the ancillary rules, which set out the circumstances and the value of that ecological rehabilitation, which have never been finalised, have a significant discount rate. So the credits that you can generate off a hectare of rehabilitated ecological mine site are very significantly discounted. So at the end of the day, it was always a significant discount. I would say that removing that provision from the regulation, because it's through the regulation, not through the act, will have this much impact on nature in New South Wales. It will be negligible, but removing the opportunity to incentivise restoration is really significant. There's been a huge amount of understanding built through the process that the mines have undertaken and, you know, that will pay dividends and there's going to be some really good sites that will be completed over the next 10 years and be able to restore, return to conservation. So that, that's my view on it. I just think it's really short sighted and, and sad that, that that's going to happen unfortunately.
I've got lots more. Do you want?
Yeah.
You go for it.
Thanks, Mr Ayers firstly. I was wondering in terms of the housing issue, could you talk us through some of the main obstacles that your members have in getting housing developments up and give us a sense of how significant an obstacle, if you put it that way, the, the biodiversity scheme is?
Well, Mr Ayers, I think the best way to think about this is that having land zoned is just one of the preconditions that is required to be able to develop a house or a home. And so beyond that, that land needs to be serviced by infrastructure, mostly enabling infrastructure. It then needs to be serviced. It then needs to be serviced by state infrastructure, so I think a a a road. Um, and then beyond that, there's potentially environmental constraints. And those environmental constraints could be um sites that are impacted by flood impacts. They could be areas that are restricted because of the higher risk nature around bushfires. And then on top of that, the need to protect um biodiversity as as part of the planning system. I think one of the things that we would look to seek out of any piece of legislation instead of regulations is something that creates more certainty within the system. And at the moment, what we would get out of this bill in its current form without those regulations is more complexity and more uncertainty, more ambiguity. Um, and there are opportunities where you could, through this this process, um particularly around registers and the provisioning of avoidance, um having that happen only once in the system. So identifying what needs to be avoided at the rezoning phase. So any future buyer of that land, any future developer of that land understands what needs to, what what the constraint is. Therefore, they can price more effectively, they can remove risk, and they're more likely to be able to bring a house to market. Um, so I think things like that, utilising the registry system to create a single point where avoidance can be identified would be a good good way to utilise this bill. Um, but the primary things that are constraining uh constraining property at the moment are feasibility of apartments in the in the infill um landscape. Um, but when it comes to greenfield development opportunities, it is access to service or zoned land, access to serviced land, and then being able to manage the environment constraints.
Sure, that's really helpful. Thank you.
Can I jump in there? Um, just if I may, I might just add a couple of extra points there. Um, in the greenfield space, so UDIA has done some research recently. It shows about twenty five percent of the greenfield housing pipeline in the state is constrained by not having answers on the biodiversity question, right? We're not saying it's land that can't be developed because of biodiversity, it's land that should be able to be be developed, but we haven't been able to get the answer yet, right? Still working through that process. And in the regions, because in Western Sydney, of course, you have the Cumberland Plain Conservation Plan that that creates certainty, that allows the developer to know exactly where they can develop and what the cost to develop in terms of biodiversity offsetting will be. That's very clear. We did that in the growth centres years ago as well. That's the gold standard. Um, if you're going to try to find that balance between where you're going to have your conservation and where you're going to have your housing and your infrastructure and everything else that's required. Where we don't have that, and we don't have that in the regions at all, um, about sixty percent of our pipeline is currently constrained. So, and that and that is just, the the main problem is the ambiguity around the avoid and minimise um question. Right? And right now, there is, nobody seems to have a good answer to that. It's it's really unclear as to what do you have to do to avoid, what do you have to do to minimise? And in local development, because it comes down to, you know, discussion with your consent authority, which is typically the council. We've got a lot of councils across the area, across the state, and every individual that you sit down with within that council, if the four of us sat down and had a discussion about how to avoid on this piece of zoned land, there'd be four different opinions, right? So we have the biodiversity assessment method, it's scientific, it's meant to be, you know, sort of guide the B D Rs. Um, but what we find is there is a lot of contention around interpreting that B D R and actually coming to an agreed position on how to avoid and minimise at the end of the day. So it's those situations that are holding up um a lot of this development. Um, we have said in terms of avoidance, um, we go, we need a much better definition around avoidance. I know in the bill, they've used a couple of different terms, no, neither of which are defined, and that's a problem. So there's reasonable measures, there's genuine measures. Um, we would, if you had to choose one, we would choose reasonable measures. Genuine measures is much too subjective. Um, definitely, please do not use that.
It definitely hasn't been helpful. That's consistent. Just sorry to interrupt, but like in terms of all the submissions we've received.
Everyone's.
Yeah.
Everyone's identified.
And that happens, I suppose, you know, and that's why this inquiry is important, but that's been incredibly unhelpful, I can certainly add.
Yeah, and that, but that's easily fixed, right? Um, but what we would say is, um, please go a step further and bring into that consideration around avoidance, trying to get regard to the project outcome there as well. The difficulty that we're finding is that the B C Act operates in isolation. The only consideration is around, you know, sort of getting that biodiversity outcome. That's important. But of, but understand that it works within, you know, within the context of the E P N A Act, right? The whole reason we're in the biodiversity offset scheme is because we're trying to get a development outcome on this land, right? But that's not in the consideration of avoid and minimise. It's what can we avoid on the biodiversity side of things? It's really the only question that um that that wouldn't be answered.
Then to, oh, sorry, you were still going.
I've got a few more, thanks.
Go for it.
Also for UDIA, could you please explain your proposed changes to the bio-certification process uh as detailed in your submission and how greater reliance on bio-certification might benefit the property industry?
Do you want to do that?
Sure.
Go for it. You can talk about our friends.
I I think everybody can agree that if there was more bio-certification across um across sites, that that would benefit everybody. That answers the question early, it answers the question upfront. Um, there is strategic conservation planning, that's, you know, the the big strategic bio certs, that's your Cumberland Plain Conservation Plan and a couple others. Um, but for our members, a standard bio-certification is typically what you're trying to get on an individual parcel of land. That process has been, I think, actually, we um, we've been having some very productive conversations with the department about this issue. Um, and they've told us, I think at the moment, there's about twenty bio-certification applications in the system. Most of them are stalled. You've only had eight, since the B C Act was implemented, you've only had eight actually come through. But a lot of interest, um, but most of them stalled. And that's for various reasons, mostly going back to this, how do you avoid and minimise? And one thing I did, I wasn't able to get to in my my earlier um response was around the definition of avoid and minimise. We would go beyond just reasonable measures and we would bring in, again, that regard to trying to get a development, you know, an outcome, project outcome on that site. And we would say reasonable and practicable or reasonable and feasible, but some additional word that, you know, sort of um concentrates the mind on, we're all sitting here trying, trying to get good outcomes, you know, a good balanced outcome on the site. In in terms of the recommendations we have in in our submission um on bio-certification, there the there are a number of things we could do in regulation, which probably don't have to get into here today. And I know the department's doing some good work thinking about that. But in legislation, we would suggest you probably do need to do a couple of additional things. We would, we think that um a right to appeal and a certification determination is important. And again, that comes back to um having the ability to have somebody um navigate the potential differences of opinions that might come through, you know, the interpretation of the BAM through that process. Um, what was the other thing we have? Oh, and also, um, what's become evident is that even if um, even if you have a certification on site, there's some local development controls um that potentially could override that or you might also sort of be called upon to do some additional avoidance. And we're, we're looking into that more thoroughly. We don't have specific examples of where that has occurred, but it's sort of raised some flags as to possibly could. So we're just trying to sort of shut that down as well. Um, the other issue is in a standard bio-certification, there's no bilateral, um, you know, federal E P B C assessment that goes with that. Standard bio cert, the tend to, I'm sorry, strategic conservation planning, they tend to try to get the bilateral, um, but not on a standard. And so what you find is you get your New South Wales bio-certification, and then if you're kicked into E P B C, we actually have a live example right now, where now the E P B C wants additional avoidance, that's throwing the whole, you know, sort of master plan development footprint out of whack. So those types of practical sort of things that we need to work on.
Sure, thank you.
Do you mind if I ask which one that is that you're saying? Do you mind if you provide that example of the one you said you've got a live one now?
I could, can I take that on notice and just ask a proponent if they're willing to provide that?
Uh, just a question for the Minerals Council now. Uh, can you explain some of your proposed amendments to the new power for the Environmental Agency Head to direct accredited assessors?
Absolutely. This this is a power which we don't don't agree with. We don't, we don't think that um it solves the problem. So I think it's pretty common ground um between all sides that the process of getting a B D R finalised is very frustrating and becoming more frustrating and more difficult and more complex um as it's gone along. Um, there is, if if you look at any major project, you can see that, you know, the first submission from the Environment Department in relation to the B D R is usually just a very long litany of issues with the way the B D R has been prepared. Um, and the problem essentially comes down to the fact that the biodiversity assessment method, you know, is a rule set that that the government aims to impose on ecology, but ecology isn't black and white. You know, it's many shades of grey, there's a lot of subjectivity to it. So in applying that that fairly rigid set of rules, there needs to be acknowledgement by all sides that there's complexity and there's subjectivity. Um, and and that's been further exacerbated by, you know, just the many, many, many documents and guidelines that hang off of the BAM. So um, I'm not sure whether you had the opportunity to read the submission from Unworld, who are an ecological consultancy. Um, but on page three of that submission, they set out all the many things that that go with the BAM. So they say, in addition to the BAM, there are three operational manuals, general notes on survey requirements for hundreds of species in the BioNet Threatened Biodiversity Database Collection, which are updated and populated without notice, seven formalised survey guideline documents with commitments to more, seven other published guides relating to the BAM, thirty biodiversity offset scheme update newsletters, fifty-three BAM update newsletters and thirty-four recorded webinars. So all of these many things apply, uh, are required to to implement the BAM. So there's just a huge, huge volume of complexity. And within each of those things, there are subjective decisions that need to be made. There are guidelines which, in many cases, the department require to be followed strictly, but are not capable of strict um application. Um, we put some examples of those um in our um submission to the review in April last year. I'm not sure if these have been resolved since then. But for instance, there was a um reptile survey guideline that recommended survey methods that would have required ecologists to handle venomous snakes. Um, there were, uh, there are surveys for amphibians, um, which require um a number of surveys within certain amounts of rain, which could end up being, you know, impossible within the periods of time where you're surveying. So there are, there are a lot of guidelines which are incapable of strict um strict application, but not much appetite in the department for justification and for an engagement on how you'll deal with that. Um, there are other issues around assessment. Um, for instance, there's a a shrub that was um thought to potentially be occurring on a mine site. Um, there um was no um expert available to, sorry, that it had to be surveyed um after fire. There's been no fire. The only other way to get it, to get um an opinion on that was to get an expert. There are no experts for this shrub. So there's many, many complexities that go into this. Um, and to think that a simple direction from the Environment Head is going to solve all of those really is is inappropriate. Um, and we've been given, you know, we've been given some um indications from the department that it would be a power that would use, be used sparingly anyway. So it's not going to resolve the problem. I I think, and you would have heard from, I think you've heard from the ecological consultants of New South Wales, there's quite a few consultancies who put in submissions, you know, the problems are more um that they're less at the extreme end where a direction will resolve it. They're more in the complexities and the engagement that's required to get a B D R and to deal with all those subjective decisions along the way. So I suppose our view is that what the government really should be doing is just going back to brass tacks. They should be sitting down with accredited assessors, including those who work for industry, with the Department of Planning, with their own accredited assessors and their own regional planning teams, and saying, okay, well, what are our problems? How do we resolve these? How do we identify these pressure points of complexity and subjectivity and put in place something that will resolve those early in the process, rather than proponents um lodging B D Rs that then need quite a a large number of um changes before they they can be accepted by the department? So, and and I don't think um that, um, there's a, there's an accreditation reset programme happening within the department. But it's kind of jumped to solutions rather than starting at this point of saying, okay, well, where are the real problems? How do we fix those problems? And working um to develop a shared understanding with industry and with the accredited assessors who are working on this as to how those things can be resolved.
Can can I just add into that? I I would, I'd make the comment that in many cases, rules are the enemy of merit. Um, so the capacity for professionals to be able to have these discussions early, establish pathways for, that's almost the gold standard in a planning system that we don't operate within. Because Claire's just read thousands of pages of documents and guidelines. Um, it's impossible to have that many rules and guidelines that don't conflict with each other. And so you then end up with this situation that's very difficult for people to be able to navigate that path. So I think on the directions um component, we would be strongly encouraging people to be engaged early in the process, rather than putting direction powers into an act.
Can I just add, can I just add?
Yeah, go for it.
One additional point on that. Um, we really do not think that this is the answer. This is a a huge, outsized sort of hammer um to try to solve this problem. And actually creates an additional real problem for development in that if your B D R can't be certified, right? If the Environmental Agency Head holds it up and says, no, you can't proceed with this B D R until you've addressed whatever. It means your D A, your development application, is not complete until you have that B D R, you can't lodge it. So it can mean that you can't even get your D A into the system to start having those conversations through requests for information or this, that or the other, that occur through the the tip, you know, just the regular assessment process. What it also does is completely removes your adjudication right through, under the E P N A Act. So if you can't lodge your D A, then you can never potentially get, you know, a refusal or a deemed refusal. And you can't then lodge an appeal in Land and Environment Court.
And there's an assessment and application process that's already in place.
So what do you say about, um, what do you say then about what Henry said? Which was, well, this is just going to keep on going and keep on going, and this, we're going to keep on going around in this circle, losing biodiversity unless we deal with primacy. Does primacy give you the certainty that your member groups and bodies need, i.e. environment, the loss of biodiversity in that consideration will take primacy over all other considerations? Which then ultimately, I suppose, we're talking about their red flags. Uh, you know, we, and we do, and I know Ms. Doherty said there are no red flag, oh, there shouldn't be red flags. But I'm curious about, is what you're suggesting that your industries and sectors need a level of certainty or a level of um clarity? Does that clarity come with, well, these are the red flags, don't even bother? Um, or, you know, this is the biodiversity, so whether we're talking critically endangered communities, critically endangered uh endangered ecology, you know, is it that, is that the certainty and clarity you're looking for? Or, or does it come down to anything? Is any biodiversity destruction is negotiable through the assessment and the continued use of variations? It's kind of, i- is that where we're at with the certainty?
Um, I I'll let Elizabeth say a couple of things in a second around, probably a little bit more detail. But maybe it's a good concept to come back to some first principles here. Um, if you look at the Housing Accord target for um New South Wales, three hundred and twenty-two thousand homes out of the three hundred and seventy thousand homes have to be delivered in what is mostly called by the department the Sydney Mega Region. So from the Lower Hunter, Central Coast, Metropolitan Sydney, Illawarra, um, Wollongong and and Shoalhaven. Um, so the overwhelming bulk of that, of the housing numbers are going to have to come out of what is a relatively small part of the state. Um, Claire mentioned earlier the the figure around over eighty percent and acknowledging the contestability that comes from um from farmers. The bulk of um the clearing issues are not relating, they're relating more to agricultural activity. And so the Parliament and the government have have got to really create some of their own priorities here.
Sorry, can I just interrupt you here, though? And I'm really sorry to do this, but you're making this assumption about nature as if you can compare one bioregion to another or so on. And I'm just curious about that. I think that's the struggle that the science. I think that's the struggle that the science brings, that to suggest that farmers out west are more culpable than housing developers in Western Sydney. So I'm just, I'm trying to understand that.
It's almost the exact opposite. It's that the housing demand won't exist in the regional communities at the same level that it will exist within the Sydney mega-region.
Understand that, yeah.
So it's not, it's not to say that there's a culpability, it's that where people will want to buy a home is much more easily identifiable and is in a smaller, more constrained part of the state. So when you're thinking about how does biodiversity and the delivery of new homes coexist, I would point you back towards Cumberland Conservation Management Plan. And I would say, working closely around strategic planning and creating a framework in which you can exist in an environment like what is happening in Western Sydney where Cumberland Conservation, Planning and Mapping has taken place, has created a much stronger degree of certainty. And so in areas like the Hunter or the Lower Hunter, which is a strong area for housing growth in the state, areas across the Central Coast, being able to work within a strategic framework that allows biodiversity and housing to coexist gives more certainty to everyone. And that's the, that is what I would describe as a gold standard. It's not trading one off against the other. We've got to find a way to allow biodiversity to exist, but we've also got to be able to meet our social and economic requirements. And I subscribe to the concept of the human right of people being able to have a home. And so there are, those areas are more confined in the state of New South Wales. And so being able to invest more effort, time, resources in getting that strategic setting right will provide a much, much stronger framework for councils, state governments, agencies, communities to understand where their biodiversity is going to be protected and where we can develop homes.
Fantastic. Ms Mitchell, I'm not sure if you're online, but I have messaged and I think she hasn't responded. Yep. Are you there, Ms Mitchell? And did you have some questions?
Just in the meantime, I just had a question for Ms Doerty about the hierarchy, like the avoid, minimise and offset hierarchy. In your submission, you mentioned that it doesn't exist in other states. So could you explain how, and I'm sorry if I missed this earlier, how it works in other states that they are able to protect their biodiversity without this hierarchy?
No, what our submission says is it's not legislated, not that it doesn't exist.
Okay, okay. So the, can you explain to me then, is it effective outside of legislation or how do you comply with those requirements outside of legislation?
It's, there's not standards legislated in other states, which is what's being proposed here.
Yep.
So similar to here, it would be in guidelines.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Yeah. So I guess my, my point is like getting to the idea that are we over-regulating this area and that other states and territories are able to engage in this space without having legislated hierarchies? And therefore you're able to still comply with biodiversity requirements outside of legislation and how do you do that?
Yeah, look, at the risk of repeating myself, the, and I'm sorry for the other committee members, but our, our view is that the avoid, minimise, offset hierarchy is already required in New South Wales. The biodiversity assessment method sets out good guidance about how you should take those opportunities to avoid, what types of things are acceptable actions to minimise. Our view is that this is a very difficult area to codify. Our industry, for instance, has fixed resources. It's very difficult for us to avoid impacts. Where we can, we do. We put infrastructure, roads, transmission lines, railways, as much as we can in areas of lower biodiversity value or no biodiversity value, but at the end of the day, we have to get to the resource. So avoidance is about opportunities to avoid. And I, I didn't say before, what I said before was not that there shouldn't be any red flags. What I said was, it's a difference, the avoid, the avoid, minimise, offset hierarchy is a different thing from listing and from potentially listing things as having serious and irreversible impacts. They are two different ways of dealing with it. If you want to prohibit impacts, then you list them in a way that prohibits impacts altogether. But avoid, minimise, offset is about taking the opportunities not to impact that thing. So they are different and obviously different industries and different projects have different opportunities to avoid. So there's a real risk to trying to codify that into a standard that then becomes and requires strict compliance across different industries, across different projects with different opportunities.
Do you think it would be more helpful then? Sorry, I'm really fixed on this, trying to get more certainty because I think it is really important and I hear it over and over. Are you suggesting in that, that if there were more list, there was more clarity and lists around serious and irreversible, that would provide more certainty as well?
No, what I'm saying is that current process around serious and irreversible impacts deals with those communities, those entities which are at significant risk of extinction. So that's already provided for in the system. The avoid, minimise, offset hierarchy is a separate thing from that.
What I'm asking though is if that category was defined more broadly, because it is very narrow.
It's already hugely broad. It's a massive list.
We've, I mean, we've got submissions that say otherwise in terms of the commensurate to the effort to try and reduce biodiversity loss that the, so your answer to that would be no, don't make it any bigger.
It's a massive list and the current interpretation by the government of, is extremely broad. So there are entities like Boxgum Woodland, which is all over the state, there are tens of thousands of hectares of it, where the department will say you can have nil impact without it being sigh.
Can I just ask, just one more thing going direct to your submission where you're sort of asserting that the changes aren't urgent and we should delay until the first quarter? That's in yours, I think Ms Doerty's submission. Are you able to inform this committee how much clearing of habitat is proposed via state significant development approvals from your member organisations between now and, say, that period?
No, I'm not.
Is that it's something that you have a lens on? Would you be able to take it on notice to assist us in any recommendations around delay?
I suggest that you ask the Department of Planning, who are coming in at four thirty.
Thank you.
Can I just?
But what I, what I would, I think just to clarify that, you know, we're looking at two years, this has been two years since the review was commenced. We were given this bill with less, there was twenty-four hours notice before it went to Parliament, as were other stakeholders. You know, there was then a period of several weeks to provide a submission here. You know, this committee's had a really limited amount of time. You had, what, three clear days to look at submissions before hearing started on Thursday? You know, I think in the big scheme of things, it really, whether this bill gets passed in, you know, October this year or sometime early next year after some proper consultation takes place, you know, it's really going to have a limited impact. You know, if, if you think that this bill getting made and then the regulations getting made sometime next year, when those things will be operational, I think it's a bit of a cute point that you're trying to make about how much clearing will we do between now and then, because a lot of that clearing might still be permissible, we just don't know, because we don't know what's going to be in the regulations. So, you know, it makes no sense to pass this bill in a hurry this year when the key provisions of it are not going to be operational until the regulations are available anyway. And I think that really is the, you know, that really is the killer blow for the government saying they've got to pass this this year, you know? Why not do the work on the regulations, consult properly, come back to the Parliament next year and pass the whole lot together? It'll have nil impact on the environment.
I might just add to that. I love upper house committees, I think they're fantastic. But I'm not sure that they're a great way of saying we've undertaken community consultation. I think this committee is effectively the primary mechanism of consultation undertaken for this bill.
I think that's pretty clear.
And would I describe that as great parliamentary practice? No, I wouldn't. There is a lot of peak organisations, the people that are on your hearing list, the opportunity to engage with them, the opportunity to work through a regulatory statement, to understand the impact of regulations. We all want to participate in that exercise. No one's asking or arguing for the removal of a biodiversity act or, or not responding to Henry. What we're saying is let's work together to get a better outcome and lobbing it up on relatively short notice and then calling an upper house inquiry or an upper house committee hearing to then be able to say we've undertaken community consultation is, is only going to lead to more challenges. So you can do this a lot better way than what you have. And then just to Ms Munro's comments before about the avoidance arrangement, I think, and this was said earlier, it's before you walked in, but definitely from a housing perspective, and I think it's something that you could look at more broadly, you, you've got to have some understanding of the project outcome that you're trying to achieve. Elizabeth mentioned in, in some of her earlier evidence, the only reason why we're undertaking a biodiversity offset discussion is because something's going to be built there. So let's, let's put the project outcome in that process so that you can then understand what are we trying to achieve and then what do you have to do from an avoidance perspective? Like without it, without putting the project outcome in that process, like it's a, it's a vacuum.
Thank you. Yes, go for it. This is the last one, we're running out of time unfortunately.
I think you asked the question a number of different ways around biodiversity outcomes. At the end of the day, we want better biodiversity outcomes as well. We're all wanting the same thing. I think what, what we're saying is we've, we've got a chance here to get it right and we just can't determine from this bill whether or not it achieves that. CCA has actually been calling on the government to do a heavy construction materials plan. And a lot of that is actually about identifying where we can actually safely and sensibly take resources for where those resources are needed, to build the houses, to build the renewable energy projects and so forth. And actually, you know, make sure we protect those zones so that, so that that can actually be done for the future. So we're not trying to fight over different parcels of land and perhaps, you know, finding that the only place left is where there are, you know, there is strong biodiversity that needs to be protected. So we're, we're very keen to work with the government proactively on plans, certainly in our case, a heavy construction materials plan, which will actually help the government meet its targets as well as help ensure that we look after our environment in the best way we possibly can.
Thank you. We've run out of time and I'm very grateful to all of you for your submissions and your evidence and taking our questions. And of course, this, I think something was taken on notice, so the secretariat, the normal process, they'll be in contact and there'll be a process after that. And thank you, all of you, very much.
Thanks for allowing us to tend. I think my final comment would be, in the middle of a housing crisis, the government and the Parliament should be very, very cautious about introducing laws that make it harder to solve that housing crisis.
Thank you.
Hopefully we've helped you with a bit of our information.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, we'll just prepare for the next witness who I believe is on video conference. Thank you. For joining us today, would I be able to get you to please state your name, your position, title, and then swear either an oath or an affirmation, which I understand you would have been provided?
I can, yes. My name is Dr Stephen Ward from EMM Consulting, Pity Limited. My title is Associate Ecologist. With regards to swearing, I will take the affirmation. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you very much. And would you like to make an opening statement to the committee?
I would, yes.
Thank you.
EMM Consulting appreciates the opportunity to provide comment on the Biodiversity Conservation Amendment Bill 2024. EMM is an Australian employee-owned business operating from nine offices across Australia and Canada. We lead the preparation of environmental assessments and have a wide range of technical experts, including a biodiversity team with forty people, of which sixteen are accredited assessors under the Biodiversity Assessment Method, or BAM. We have extensive experience on biodiversity assessment and offsets, including projects such as Snowy 2.0, Hunter Transmission Project and oven mountain pumped hydro storage project, which like many of the large projects that we work on, have complicated biodiversity assessment and offset requirements. EMM is broadly supportive of the objects of the Amendment Bill, in particular to establish the avoid, minimise and offset hierarchy as a key principle in legislation and transitioning the biodiversity offset scheme to net positive biodiversity outcomes. EMM does not however, support the proposed directions powers to allow the Environment Agency Head to issue directions to accredited assessors in relation to the preparation of biodiversity assessment reports. Under section ten, six, point ten A of the Amendment Bill, EMM has strong concerns with regards to these proposed new powers. The need for these powers is unclear. The independent review panel led by Dr Ken Henry did not identify deficiencies in the quality or consistency of the work carried out by accredited assessors. The need for seeking these powers is ambiguous and unclear. EMM is also concerned that directions will reduce consistency. Ecology assessments are complex and in many circumstances are not fully addressed with, by the BAM. Directions regarding assessment approaches issued may not be consistent with the BAM or other assessments. EMM regularly receives inconsistent advice on similar issues from different New South Wales government offices. There is a high risk that directions will similarly be inconsistent, particularly as the power to issue directions could be delegated under section fourteen point four of the Biodiversity Conservation Act. EMM believes that consistency and certainty would be better achieved by use of policies and guidelines, measures which can already be effectively deployed. EMM is also concerned about the potential reputational risk to accredited assessors. The personal nature of the directions threshold is unnecessary and is particularly concerning when there is no right of appeal after a direction is issued. We believe that if a direction's power is required, it should be limited to amending a biodiversity assessment report to be compliant with the BAM. In summary, EMM believes the need for seeking the power to issue directions to accredited assessors is unclear, can reduce consistency and could create reputational risks for accredited assessors without a right of appeal pathway. Thank you.
Thank you very much and thank you for your submission. We'll just have a series of questions if that's okay. I might just start with, it is a bit unclear, but I think that, you know, the motivation to provide the Environment Agency Head with a power is to kind of be a, I suppose, a bit of a safety net in relation to, you know, potential unanticipated consequences that might eventuate through the application of the BAM. Is, do you have any other reason to believe or any other idea of why the Environment Agency Head would be, or the legislation would be seeking to provide that power?
I, I don't have insight as to why that power is being sought. It was, to be honest, it was quite a shock when I became aware of, of that power being sought.
Do you think, do you see it in any way related to, because I'm trying to understand it a bit too, do you see any relation to that and perhaps Henry's recommendation that the ministers, you know, there'd be concurrence powers for certain aspects? Is, it, it, do you see that that's potentially the motivation around it all?
I am not clear as to whether that might be the motivation. It is not clear to me whether that would be the case.
Thank you. I was just curious, I, I know you've worked very closely with the scheme and the system to date. So in terms of, in terms of the, the ability, I suppose, the, the BAM and the application of the BAM, we've had some submissions so far. and the application of the BAM, we've had some submissions so far about, you know, the contests between biodiversity assessment reports that are provided and the application of the BAM and the discrepancies between different reports. How do you see, in your experience, what's the best way to resolve competing views and competing applications about impacts as a result of different B D A's?
First, Chair, I would note that I believe it is not restricted just to B D A's. It affects both sides. It affects both B D A's as well as stewardship, biodiversity stewardship assessment reports. And I have seen inconsistencies in the directions given, as indicated in my opening statement, from various government departments. Ecology is an incredibly complicated, difficult area. We are seeking to come up with a scheme and a system with various boxes in which to put ecology. That inherently is a struggle and frequently the ecological attributes just don't fit, or potentially someone has undertaken a particular approach and for whatever reason, there may be a different point of view. The challenge, and I guess as indicated in my opening statement, in my view, a better way will be to seek to have clearer guidance on various aspects within the BAM so that all parties, both accredited assessors as well as those within government agencies, are clear on the intended approach.
And so we're just trying to, I'm just trying to understand how that would work in practice. So where does that happen? Is it like, where does that guidance happen? Does it happen discretionary from the department to the expert? Or where does that happen in the process?
So I guess my view is that on a project by project basis, there is the opportunity for an accredited assessor and the department to sit down and engage on matters and to discuss them. Again, frequently ecology doesn't fit into boxes. So it's talking through the specifics of that scenario and options around how it could be approached and seeking to come up with an agreed pathway and way forward. Aside from the project by project basis, accredited assessors are actually reaching out to the government to seek to engage on these items. I'm not appearing here today in this role, but I have been until the middle of this year, the Chair of the Environment Institute of Australia and New Zealand Biodiversity Offsets Community of Practice. And in that role, we, as that group, we were reaching out and engaging with the government on how are various attributes within the scheme approached? What is the mechanism? Trying to seek to come up with consistent methods by which that could be undertaken. And that was completely outside of any particular project. So there were no projects at stake, but just seeking clarity and consistency for all.
And just finally on this point, was that, so was that in relation, were there, in that work, are there specific examples of areas where contest and dispute is happening? Like is there a pattern of inconsistent approaches, inconsistencies or disputes or complexities? Or is it across the board?
There can be various items across the board. One of the areas, for example, that has come up with particular discussion is around the delineation of what's called species polygons. So what is the extent of habitat of a species on a site? Now, that can be a development site, or it can be a conservation site, a stewardship site. The approaches taken by departments can be different, different between different regions, different between a development site, a B D A, and a stewardship site or conservation site, a biodiversity stewardship assessment report. And the basis behind that is not clear to accredited assessors and can cause a great deal of frustration. And I believe frustration at the government level as well, because there is no, frequently for many of threatened species, there is not a consistent approach to delineation of those areas of species polygons.
Thank you. And I'll just ask one more and then I'll hand over to my colleague. Just in terms of, what is your experience in terms of the department's approach and use to variations?
Variations to what in particular?
Well, to any of the kind of rules that are applied, you know, or the supposed rules that apply.
It is variable. In my experience, some within department will be prepared to discuss them. Sometimes that can be quite a lengthy discussion process, depending on exactly what the issue is and the circumstances and background behind it. In other scenarios, it can be, I guess, more adversarial and in essence, no, it must be done in this particular manner. Obviously, in various instances, accredited assessors will not agree. And it's a case of seeking to try to, you know, work through it and resolve that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr Ward, for your submission and your evidence. Do you see any duplication between the role of the assessor and the role of the Environment Agency in terms of both providing biodiversity assessment advice? And do you see any way to address that or minimise that?
The role of an accredited assessor, as I see it, is to undertake the detailed site assessment and provide a fair assessment of the biodiversity values present on land, whether it be a development site or a conservation site. I don't see that there is duplication of the role of the Environment Agency. They need to review that material, check the adequacy of the assessment prepared. And obviously, at times, there may be different points of view and to, you know, work those through.
Sure, thank you. Just lastly, before I hand over to Ms Munro, the offset scheme is really complicated. And there's methods, calculators, guidelines, and probably other things I'm not aware of. How would you simplify the process while maintaining its integrity?
The billion dollar question.
I believe that the biodiversity assessment method is very rigorous. The multitude of different operational manuals, survey guidelines, other guidance material which is provided makes it very difficult to understand and to be on top of the full complexity of it. In essence, seeking to simplify that down would be desirable. It is, however, very difficult to do in practice. As mentioned, many ecological aspects or other site based factors are difficult to deal with. And there can be ones completely that will affect ecology of a site, you know, fire, flooding and things like that, which are not actually about the ecology per se, but they will affect a biodiversity assessment.
Thanks, Mr Ward.
You, thank you for coming along today and for your submission. I wanted to draw out a little bit more on this idea that many matters and circumstances are not fully addressed by the BAM because of the complexities of the natural and modified environment. And I'm just wondering if you could give me an example of how that is the case?
So I mentioned a couple there where issues such as fire or flood, which may create issues. Another may be lack of access to lands, so where a site assessment cannot be undertaken. And that may be due to a landholder not permitting access or just purely to the physical attributes of the land, like very steep cliffs, for example, can create work health and safety issues to ecologists assessing those areas or accessing them. There can be, I guess, other matters that aren't fully dealt with. There have been some policies being released in draft recently by the government, things like indirect impacts on biodiversity values and how they should be dealt with and managed or assessed in biodiversity assessment reports. There are many of them. I mean, others include, and these are frequently dealt with in survey guidelines, where the window in which a species which will be detectable may be very short and narrow and may depend on particular, either seasonal or weather characteristics, such as having had sufficient rainfall, for example. So there is a whole plethora of factors which can make biodiversity assessment quite challenging in nature.
So you're going to write that you regularly receive inconsistent advice on similar issues? Is that, like, how does that relate to the evidence you've just provided? Like, some officers might say, well, yes, you can't access that site, but we're just going to take your word for it. Or others might say, you can't access that site, therefore we're not going to approve.
That is correct. There can be others, all the way back to the mapping of vegetation. There can be different points of view as to how vegetation should be mapped. In particular, with biodiversity assessment reports, you are often dealing with highly degraded areas. They may have, for example, scattered trees within a highly cropped landscape or otherwise highly degraded. And there could be differing advice given on that. There is differences in regards to things like indirect impact assessment. What is the distance from a particular proposal that should be assessed in terms of its indirect impacts? What is the scope and scale of indirect impact that should be applied to that area? What is the particular survey techniques that should be used? Those, though, tend to be dealt with more via the survey guidelines more broadly, but they do not cover all species groups in detail. There is a whole range of issues. And sorry, another area is in particular on the application of species polygons. Where a threatened species has been detected on a site, the scale and scope or size of the area to be applied. We have, for example, in some instances on impact sites, biodiversity development assessment reports, been provided advice that it should, in essence, wherever there is the associated vegetation community, it should be treated as being all of that. But then when it comes to doing a stewardship site assessment, that same approach may not be applied. Or what is the number of sightings required? Is it one? Is it two? Is it three? To show that a species is in fact present and the extent of the habitat present.
And is it better that there be flexibility embedded into the system to ensure that the specific requirements of different locations are respected or taken into account through these processes, rather than a statewide approach to what are essentially unique ecosystems?
Yes, I would say that there should be the ability for there to be flexibility within the scheme and the system to cope with individual site characteristics. I do believe, and as per the opening statement and the submission, that policies and guidance is still required on a broad scale. In particular, I have mentioned the threatened species, like the processes to identify the extent of habitat for those, both on the impact sites as well as the conservation or stewardship sites. So it's, I guess, a mix of the two, I believe, would be beneficial.
In terms of the require, like, there is no requirement the directions be consistent with the BAM when it comes to the, the agency head making directions after an assessment? Is there, how does that work currently?
In terms of the ability for comments to be made on a report, is that?
Yeah. So in your comments, you say that obviously the objective of the BAM is to ensure that consent authorities have clear and consistent information. And you also have a clear set of outcomes from the BAM. But I understand that you're suggesting that the bill doesn't link those two aspects of the BAM together, like the actual findings and the outcome?
I guess what the submission was that in the directions, the ability to issue directions is not tied to or limited to being consistent with the BAM.
So does that, is that the case now also?
The, I mean, comments can be made by government agencies on matters. The, in general, they will be seeking consistency with the BAM. There can be different points of view at times as to what the requirements of the BAM are. It is, as was mentioned before, a complicated system and scheme. So I guess broadly, there is some ability at the moment for comments to not be restricted to the BAM. But in terms of if a direction is being issued to an accredited assessor, that it's quite a significant outcome. And in my view, as an accredited assessor, you would tend to expect that the direction issued should be consistent with the BAM.
I guess what I'm trying to understand is, what's your intention in making that comment in your submission? Is it something that's not working now that needs to be fixed in legislation? Or is there a risk, if it's not in legislation, that you think there would be directions made that don't align with the BAM?
I guess the comment has been made, it is unclear to me as to where this, seeking the ability to issue accredited assessors directions is coming from. And the fact that it won't be limited necessarily just to being consistent with the BAM creates a lot of uncertainty as to, well, what exactly could this consist of? And again, there is no right of appeal pathway for accredited assessors. So if you are issued with this direction, it has the ability to have a significant outcome for a assessment report. And I guess the other one is that it may also be that in discussions, as mentioned, ecology is such a complex topic that potentially the department might threaten to issue a direction to an accredited assessor. And that may in itself stifle discussion of what is really quite a complex topic and seeking to reach a agreed outcome.
Thank you.
I was just going to finish with, in terms of, in terms of the bills, and I know, I don't think it's in your submission, but I'm just curious about your view in relation to serious and irreversible impacts. And yeah, whether you have any view on the scope of serious and irreversible impacts, whether you think there's scope to improve how we view that in, through a lens of actually trying to achieve our objective, and that is conserve biodiversity and through the view of Henry, that we're currently not doing that under the current system?
I guess, look, this is obviously not covered by the submission made, so I guess any comments here are my own personal views.
Thank you.
The, I guess the comment I would make first is, as identified in the Henry review, 83% of land clearing happens under the Local Land Services Act for agriculture. The outcomes under the Biodiversity Conservation Act and as assessed by accredited assessors, in my personal view, are at a higher standard and give greater biodiversity outcomes in the way of offsets and the like. And I guess, you know, the amount of clearing, if you have 83% happening for agricultural purposes, then that is the vast bulk of the clearing in New South Wales. In terms of, so that, I guess, in relation to serious and irreversible impacts, you will have a lot of will have a lot of impacts that are not going through that process and not going through the Biodiversity Conservation Act process currently, and that is the majority of clearing in New South Wales. In terms of the SAII processes, the, again, my personal view is that the legislation currently has the principles. The assessment pathway tends to refer back to those principles, and it tends to be quite circular in nature. My view is that it would be better to have the principles identifying the entities for, to be listed as SAII entities, and then to have a separate assessment process. You know, what is it that is being impacted upon, and what is the significance for that particular entity? So frequently in ecology, context is key. If you have, for example, a development, are you losing one threatened plant or one animal out of ten or a hundred, or is it one out of ten thousand? The context is vastly different and is crucial to understanding how that will affect that particular species or local population.
Do you think, and just finally, I know we're out of time, but I just got one curious thing, just given your expertise. Do you think, you know, the threshold of, is a local population or a species likely to become extinct because of the development, particularly referring to the old seven-part test? Do you think that that is something that is still relevant in terms of the BAM, the assessment criteria, and do you think that that becomes a kind of red flag?
I guess the assessment processes, biodiversity assessment processes have changed a lot from days of the seven-part test. I guess what I see currently is a lot of projects, in particular major projects, usually requiring a biodiversity development assessment report. So it is more common than not, even if there is very little or minimal biodiversity values on the site or impacted, to still trigger a biodiversity development assessment report. So I guess the level of assessment that I see is usually quite high.
Okay, thank you so much. We're out of time. I don't think there was anything taken on notice, but if there was, the secretariat will be in touch with you. And thank you very much. We're very grateful for your time and your evidence today.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Let's start. Thank you very much for your time today and coming along. Could I please ask you to state your name, your position, title, and swear either an oath or an affirmation?
My name is Tom Forrest. I'm the Chief Executive of Urban Task Force Australia. I'd like to take the affirmation. I solemnly, sincerely, and truly declare in a firm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. And would you like to start by making a short opening statement?
Yeah, I would. And I'll give this to the secretariat for the purposes of the transcript when I'm completed today. Urban Task Force supports the biodiversity offset scheme, so it's a clear point that I'd like to state right at the beginning. That said, all schemes are, all schemes are subject to review and can be improved, and we welcome the opportunity being given by this hearing to be able to contribute to that. We're committed to working with the government and with DQ to make this legislation work as best as possible for the expansion of regional towns, for the growth of our larger town centres, for the provision of jobs, and for the creation of people's homes, and yet at the same time for the improvement, for improvements to be realised in the performance of conserving biodiversity through a net positive agenda. But we start with a note of concern regarding the proposed hierarchy of avoid, minimise, offset. While in principle, it's a sensible thing, it's a sensible way to proceed, and it sounds great, but we believe that a more, a better overarching principle would be a more case-by-case applied philosophy that simply states what's best for ecology is the best way to proceed. What do I mean by that? Well, sometimes, in a desperate desire to preserve a relatively small clump of species through an avoid, which are in themselves potentially at danger, the idea of making the first principle to avoid any damage to that biodiversity conservation opportunity, you potentially lose a much greater opportunity for the provision of another social good, and I'll come back to that in a minute, but I think you'll guess, if you know anything about anything I've ever read, I'm probably talking about housing supply. Let's get it right up front, is one of the points I'd like to make. What do I mean? Well, land that's assessed as holding high ecological value should be zoned for conservation. We shouldn't have a situation where land that has high-value biodiversity species is then zoned for development, therefore sending a market signal to the entire property development community that, hey, this land's going to be serviced at some point with infrastructure, and it's where we've targeted for the urban growth of our population and for new employment opportunities. And then you come back having presumably paid a fee as a property developer with that greater expectation of development potential. You've driven the price up, if you like, only to find at a latter stage of development, oh, by the way, there's a whole series of high-value biodiversity opportunities for conservation on this land, and you're not allowed to develop at all. Sort of, sorry, what? You can't do that to the private sector, is what I, so I'd say, get the high-value stuff nominated right up front and preserve that, preserve that through the zoning process, or even segment it out so that it is clearly not an area that's able to be, don't surprise us later. And that's a role for councils, it's a role for government, it's a role for the private sector, of course, also to contribute at that by sharing in the studies, by working with the principles to ensure that those areas are clearly marked out upfront, and then we can work together on minimising the impact or offsetting the impact in areas that are zoned for development at the point when a DA is lodged. So do the big stuff up front and then deal with the detail later. Look, we're concerned, as I mentioned at the beginning, the rigid application of a hierarchy may not yield the best ecological outcome. There's the potential to, for adversely impacting on housing supply, and we need to just be careful how, to ensure a flexible approach in applying the avoid, minimise, offset criteria, avoiding it to ensure that we don't get a manifest conflict between two competing goods. The current requirement for multiple ecological assessments is something that's of a concern. What do I mean by that? Well, you can get, you get, you often have an ecological assessment undertaking at the rezoning stage, you have a further ecological assessment as a result of, at the rezoning stage, the local panel might ask a series of questions. You'll, of course, have an ecological assessment undertaking through the consultation process. If you lodge a development application, there'll be further calls, sometimes completely different calls, because they're different teams. The people who do rezonings are strategic planners, the people who do development application assessments are statutory planners, and they often have completely different views of the interpretation of anything that's vaguely ambiguous in legislation. It's a note for the committee that we want to ensure that we avoid ambiguity as much as possible, and yet this is the conundrum, we want to ensure flexibility as well so that we can get the best possible outcomes overall. Easing the financial burden on housing supply is obviously something that, in our view, will generate a double benefit. The more housing supply we have at a lower price will protect, it has a potential to protect a net positive agenda. How? Well, we would like to see the government putting money into the biodiversity conservation offset scheme, put up some grants to support areas where the government sees there to be an opportunity for development of new communities. It's almost like back in the days of Bob Debus, Frank Sator, Morris Yama, Bob Carr, Craig Knowles, when the Growth Centre's Commission was established as a bio-certified conservation area. They, Bob Carr preserved massive swathes of national park in close consultation with Jeff Angel and with lots of environmental groups along the way. And I worked very closely personally with Mark Arons, with Lisa Corbin, with Simon Smith back in those times, about ensuring that we could chew gum and skip rope.
They were good old days.
We were delivering certainty, we were delivering certainty for the private sector in terms of where they could develop houses and new employment centres, and at the same time, we were making a genuine contribution to biodiversity conservation through that biodiversity certification process. It was giving both. And what I'm concerned about, and I see a little bit in some of the bills drafting, is the pursuit of one agenda, but not necessarily with full cognizance and understanding of the impact that might have on that other agenda, that being the other thing which we read about in the newspapers every day, partly thanks to me, housing supply crisis, without wanting to overdramatise it. Further regulation under the New South Wales Plan for Nature could have uncertain effects on many greenfields locations in the outskirts of not only Greater Sydney, but regional towns right across the state. In fact, in regional communities where the land value is lower, it's quite often the case that the biodiversity conservation offsets are of such significant magnitude that they make development of those regional communities completely unachievable, unfeasible. We're talking areas like Tamworth, Armidale, Wogga Wogga Parks, even Nowra, and I don't go close to mentioning them all, areas in the Hunter, areas in the Illawarra on the south coast, north coast, areas in central western New South Wales and the Northern Tablelands. All of those don't have the high values that Sydney's got, but they have similar costs associated with biodiversity conservation. When you start stacking that all up together, you actually end up with a situation where you're working against regional decentralisation. You're actually forcing everyone, all in all, the homes to be built back in Greater Sydney. And that has its own problems, as I'm sure you're all aware. So we have a conundrum here that appears to be a conflict between two competing virtuous policy imperatives. The task before us, and one that we're happy and willing to participate in, is working towards treating one and the other together and not at the expense of each other. Thank you.
Fantastic, thank you. That's incredibly helpful. So you're kind of, I mean, actually, I might hand to my colleagues, because I have gone first every time, and I note Ms Mitchell has joined.
I've got two questions.
Mr Lawrence, please go ahead.
So thanks for your evidence, Mr Forrest. As part of the Plan for Nature, the government is going to develop a map of high biodiversity areas to guide decision-makers. And in terms of what you were talking about earlier, would that go some way to flag biodiversity areas early on? And is that something that could be used as a guide for investment in terms of what you were talking about earlier?
Certainly, yes. Whenever you do a high-level analysis, you tend to end up with a massive, dare I say, splodge of areas that are ruled out for investment. And what that requires, then, in many cases, is that the private sector take those maps away, and they disprove what is presumed to be high biodiversity conservation areas. So there's a presumption, once you've got that splodge on your area of land, you are effectively, then there's a reverse onus of proof. And unfortunately, what we've found in the past is those splodges tend to be incredibly broad, and they, it's a little bit about, it's a little bit like or akin to the flood mapping, that a difference of three or four metres mightn't sound like much, but it makes a huge difference in terms of the development opportunity in a particular area. If you do the same thing with biodiversity conservation, you end up ruling out potential opportunities for new housing supply or new employment opportunity, and it's very, very difficult and often very, very expensive. That said, it's better to have something than nothing. And so if this is a start to ensuring that we're starting to identify high-value biodiversity conservation areas, and that leads to a more strategic approach to, well, do we want to develop in that area, or is it just too expensive to provide for the offsets to be able to, or the value, the ecological community loss is just too great to justify it, then let's nominate that as early as possible and have that on the table as early as possible. In my recent meetings with DQ, we note that we're dealing with a considerable legacy issue here, where land has previously been zoned for future urban growth and housing supply, and yet now that we're doing proper and more detailed and rigorous examinations of that land, we're finding high conservation value species. And we'll have to go through a process of resolving those sorts of issues and identifying, and that's where the biodiversity offset scheme is so valuable in assisting people not completely neutralise the investment that they might have made in good faith and in conjunction with the indicators from the government of the day at the time. I'm not saying anyone did anything wrong, but nonetheless, the rezoning, as I mentioned earlier, pushes the value up, pushes the price up. So developers buy it with an expectation of development, and it's a bit of a shock if you go in and say, actually, no, you can't do it. So we're going to get over those legacy issues, and then we want to have a more sensible, open book way of proceeding as we move forward.
Thank you. And just lastly from me, and again, it's in terms of the housing issue, can you give us a sense of what is the proportion of offset costs compared to the total capital expenditure of a housing project? In terms of, like, how much of a deal breaker is this stuff really, I guess, is what I'm asking?
It depends on the level of biodiversity that you find on your land. So the average biodiversity, and Professor Mamaney, Dr Mamaney would be able to advise you further if you ask, probably on every, the cost of every single credit on every single different area of land. But my understanding is that a single credit is valued at something in the order of $2,200. Then the number of credits that the scheme now requires you to provide in order to offset any degradation of biodiversity on that land will add up to an amount. You can do that one of two ways. You can do that through a fixed credit purchase process, or you can do it through an open market negotiation, which the, which the trading scheme enables. It can be quite considerable. And obviously, where it's very, very high, you probably have a large amount of high-value biodiversity, and we're probably in those cases moving more towards the avoid scenario. But of course, you've always got to balance that against the need for supply of housing, the need for development of, etc. It's a quasi-economic argument. We like the idea that, at least if you know upfront that something's going to cost a certain amount, that gets factored into the land price and hopefully reduces the land value, because you know that if you are going to try and develop on that particular land with high conservation, that biodiversity species contained within it, you know that you're going to be paying a large amount of money into the offset scheme, and in any effort to minimise the impact on that species. We like that. As I mentioned before, though, we're dealing with a large amount of legacy land, which has previously been zoned, and what we want to see is find a way in which we can not rip out the value of those opportunities. And I think that perhaps government support for development in areas which have potential for high growth or potential for urban development, we could do that and have some contribution from the private sector, but also have a contribution from the government towards the environmental objectives.
Thanks, Mr Forrest.
Ms Mitchell, did you, over to you.
Hi, thank you, Chair. Hello, everybody. I have been listening in, but I appreciate the chance to ask some questions. Mr Forrest, just have a couple I wanted to ask you about. I was interested when you were talking about the challenges in regional areas, and I'm in Gullardar today where I live, so I know that there are certainly housing pressures in regional communities as well. But one of the participants that we heard from last week, the country mares, gave some examples of particular housing development projects that had been effectively not worth going ahead with, so they'd been stopped just because of the cost of the biodiversity offsets. And they were proposing a potential way to move forward would be to have the costs as a percentage of the land value, so I guess it was relative to, you know, the difference, say, in western New South Wales versus in other areas. Would you have a view on an appropriate? Would you have a view on an approach like that?
Certainly from the property development perspective, that'd be much favoured, very much favoured. Probably from those who are trying to build up a pool of funds in order to preserve and conserve biodiversity, I wouldn't, I'd be surprised if they agreed with that. Nonetheless, that is the nature of the conundrum. Because, as I mentioned, in particularly in regional areas, the rental vacancy rates are incredibly low, significantly lower than they are here in Greater Sydney. And the delivery of new housing stock almost necessarily means you're starting to impact upon native flora in particular. So, and that then impacts on native fauna, because once you get rid of the flora, you almost necessarily have a massive impact on the fauna. So you have a genuine problem, and the cost associated with those offsets effectively then exacerbates the housing crisis, which then negates the opportunities to grow those regional communities, which is something that hitherto we've always thought was a good thing. And in fact, governments of both political persuasions have worked very, very hard to try and expand our regional communities and our regional areas and stop the difficulties associated with urban sprawl. And yet now, we've got a bill which has the potential, if not well-applied and not carefully thought through, to work against precisely that.
Just one more, if I may. Chair, maybe two more if I have time, please, Chair. Thank you. Just very quickly, I don't know, this is a broader question, but in terms of the planning system, the fact that you've got the same system and assessment for, say, a housing project as you would with, you know, the other end of the scale, like a large mining project, which obviously has different scales of environmental considerations, do you think that adds to the complexities as well?
Look, to be fair to the Department of Planning, they're not completely hopeless at differentiating between the needs for the secretary's environmental requirements on a large mine compared to a housing development. And generally speaking, when you get down onto council community land, they're not dealing with large mine applications. They are going through the SSD stream. So those important and big ones are going through the professionals within the planning system that have the capacity to deal with that. But you are right in this important way, and that is, I think that we need to start thinking about having some subsections of the Planning Act, which specifically are targeted at addressing the development of regional town centres and regional communities' housing supply, land use issues. I think that lumping everything together conflates some of the difficulties we have in urban areas with completely the opposite difficulties we might have in regional communities. And that's a nuance for perhaps a different parliamentary discussion, but one that certainly I'd be pleased to talk about. There is one thing that I wanted to raise, and that is the question of the ministerial concurrence that's referred to in this legislation for SSDSS projects. Now, there are clearly some projects where you would want to have a bit of an environment minister's oversight, or at least the department DQ's oversight, things like large dams, private dams, I mean, wind farms, mines. Clearly, you're going to have impacts on the environment, and it's important that the right people look at that and ensure that biodiversity conservation is progressed in a net positive way. But I do, there's a lot of development now, I say pleasingly, of homes and housing supply that is now done through the SSD stream. We're talking about infill affordable housing with a value over $75 million and only $30 million in regional communities, where you have that affordable housing component. We're talking about all the TOD developments over $60 million, and again, a lesser amount in the regional communities. I'm not sure that having an additional concurrence power or requirement to an additional minister in those circumstances is entirely appropriate. Is that you, Sarah?
Yeah. Ms Mitchell, would you mind just muting while Mr Forrest is talking, just because of the sound? Thank you. Perfect. Sorry, carry on.
Bad enough hearing me once. So where you've got the, what we're, and then everyone says, well, you know, don't worry about that, it'll just be a bit of a tick and flick, you know. Where there's not going to be any significant environmental biodiversity offset issues to be addressed, then it won't take very long. But you know what? Every time you add an additional government-based concurrence to a housing application, which is worth over $75 million, while it might start going through the system in two weeks, I'll be staggered if it doesn't take six months and two years' time. So I raise that as a cautionary note. I'm not saying it definitely shouldn't be there, but I think maybe we should turn our attention to maybe limiting that concurrent power to where it really should be targeted. And that is those areas where you are going to see some sort of significant level of biodiversity offset. Again, I thank the staff of DQ for helping me understand exactly the intent and the intended operation of that, but I nonetheless raise that concern.
Can I just ask about, you know, the Cumberland Plan Conservation Plan and those certified instruments? We've heard from previous submitters that they believe that's the kind of gold standard with this, is what's, I'm assuming your view is perhaps the same, but as they say, assume nothing.
No. Yes, it is the gold standard of the way I think we should be going. And when I talked about opportunities for the example shown through the north-west and south-west growth centres and the bio-certification of large areas of land there for the purpose of certainty for investment in development potential, and indeed the Western Sydney Employment Lands, which is now basically the Eretropolis. As it was, in each of those areas, there was a degree of certainty, and now we're seeing the same. It took a long time to come about, as different governments, both at state and federal level, all put their own print on it and had their own ruler, ran their own rulers over it. It's taken a long time to evolve, but we think that the Cumberland Plan Management Plan is a sensible model for moving forward. And when I say I'd like to see both the departments of DPHI and DQ, I'd like to see them working together, a little bit like I alluded to earlier with Sam Eden and Lisa Corbin, within the Department of Environment and the Department of Planning, working hand in glove, and with Jennifer Westercott as well, working together to ensure that, as a government, we put, as a government, or as the government, the government puts out a process which addresses both of the imperatives that we've spoken about simultaneously, and in a way that has the least negative impact on the other. So the maximum positive for both and the least negative for both. And I think the Cumberland Plan Management Plan, and I think the bio-certification processes associated with the north-west and south-west growth centres are a model of how that can be done.
Thank you. Our time has come to an end. Are there any final things, anything you missed out, Mr Forrest?
Look, nothing that I haven't raised in the submission that I gave. If you've got any supplementary, if you wish to ask me any supplementary questions at any time, you're welcome to, but at this point, I have nothing further to add. Thank you very much for the opportunity, Mrs.
Thank you very much for your time and your evidence. Thank you. We've got a number of people joining us by video. Thank you all. Can I please get each of you to state your full name, your position title, and then swear either an oath or an affirmation which would have been provided to you? And if we could, we will start with Mr Lothian.
Andrew Lothian, President of Ecological Consultants Association of New South Wales. My affirmation is I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you very much. And we might go to Ms Hogan.
Yes, Rebecca Hogan, Vice President of the Ecological Consultants Association of New South Wales. My affirmation, I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. And Mr Trezais.
James Trezais, Director of the Biodiversity Council. And my affirmation is I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. And Professor Maron?
Good afternoon. My name's Martine Maron. I'm a member of the Wentworth Group of Concerned Scientists. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. And finally, Ms Madaris.
Thank you, Chair. My name is Debbie Madaris. I'm the Acting Director of the Wentworth Group of Concerned Scientists. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you very much, all of you, and thank you for attending today and the evidence you're about to give. Would anybody like to start by making a short opening statement? You can wave your hand. Yes, please, Ms Hogan, please go ahead.
Okay, I've got an opening statement on behalf of the Ecological Consultants Association. Firstly, I'd like to thank the Chair for this opportunity to appear today. There's widespread concern about the biodiversity offset scheme failing to meet conservation outcomes, while at the same time increasing costs and delays to the assessment of developments. You might say we're in a lose-lose situation. Ecological consultants are uniquely placed to best understand why the legislation is failing on both accounts. The ECA of New South Wales, for years, has been seeking to engage with government to avoid ongoing releases of legislative instruments which, from our unique perspective, are destined to fail from the outset, like this one. Many of the issues that now need to be fixed could have been avoided if there had been genuine and representative industry consultation. We are in support of most of the reforms proposed, but are deeply concerned by the lack of definition around phrases and terms used. The industry needs clear direction and interpretation guidelines. There are loopholes all over the place. We are particularly concerned by the proposed object to enable the Environment Agency head to issue directions relating to consulting reports. The wording appears to empower a single person to bypass, at whim, procedural fairness and our democratic legal system. The object is based on an assumption that the Environment Agency head, or the delegated representative, has a comprehensive and perfect understanding of all aspects of the legislation and its correct implementation. This is not the experience reported by members of the ECA. ECA members can provide examples of where department advice has been proven incorrect, and examples of where different consultants have been provided with opposing advice from the department. The objective is not derived from any recommendation of the independent review, but appears to be offered as a solution to improving consistency of reports. We put the outcome would be better achieved through ensuring that new instruments are properly developed in consultation with practitioners, to ensure they can be implemented effectively, and that they are released in conjunction with clear interpretation guidelines. We also put that this is a minor issue compared to the bigger fails of the boss market, and extensive land clearing still permitted under the Rural Fire Service Policies and the Local Land Services Act. And as a final note, the consulting industry is currently under immense pressure due to the constant updates, tweaking and changes to this legislation. A recent survey found that in the last five years, nearly one in four consultants have sought help from a doctor to manage their stress, and 63% of accredited assessors are currently considering leaving the industry. We are losing our most experienced consultants at an unsustainable rate, and this should be a concern to conservationists and developers alike.
Thank you very much, Ms Hogan. Is there anybody else who wanted to make a short opening statement? Yes, please, Ms Madaris, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. My opening statement is on behalf of the Wentworth Group. We all know that biodiversity in New South Wales is on a steady trajectory of decline. There are almost 500 species predicted to face extinction in the next 100 years. Habitat loss is a key driver, and yet land clearing rates remain high. The biodiversity offset scheme is the primary tool intended to assure that the impacts of clearing and development are appropriately offset with biodiversity gains elsewhere. Yet numerous reviews have highlighted significant shortcomings with the scheme's effectiveness, transparency and integrity. In 2022, this committee identified serious flaws and recommended sweeping overhauls. The Wentworth Group welcome the government's stated intention to improve biodiversity outcomes from the biodiversity offset scheme. However, we are of the opinion that the bill, as it is currently drafted, will do little to demonstrably improve biodiversity outcomes. The key question we have to ask ourselves is whether New South Wales is going to make genuine efforts to deliver better outcomes for nature, or whether we are going to allow the biodiversity offset scheme to continue to facilitate the ongoing decline of the New South Wales environment in the name of progress. We have recommended several amendments that could vastly improve the bill and thus biodiversity outcomes under the scheme. The full details are in our submission, but to give you a sense of what our recommendations could achieve, we are proposing amendments that would ensure that the transition to net positive would result in real, measurable and absolute gains for biodiversity. As it currently stands, the proposal to move to net gain could still mean continued declines, just not as steep as now. Or it could mean turning around those declines. We need to clearly define in legislation which it is, as these different futures will have very different requirements. We also need to ensure that these gains benefit the specific species and ecosystems which are being impacted, and that our irreplaceable biodiversity values are genuinely protected, not lost forever. This means that we can only allow the further destruction of nature if it is something that we know we can replace. We also suggest practical mechanisms for avoiding the problems that plague so many offset funds across Australia by putting in place safeguards that would stop the biodiversity conservation fund from continuing to accrue offset obligations that it couldn't possibly meet. We acknowledge that the measures proposed in our submission do not comprehensively address every flaw in the scheme identified to date, but they do provide a considerable improvement compared to the current bill. The New South Wales Plan for Nature recognises that biodiversity in New South Wales is in crisis and that we must take urgent action to put nature on a path to recovery. But before we can achieve recovery, we must first stop ongoing decline. By strengthening this bill, we can take a significant step in the direction of leading nature better off than we found it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are you happy, are you all happy for us to launch into some questions? Just nod, or, yep, fantastic, thank you. Did you want to start, Mr Lawrence?
No, I'm happy to be someone else to start.
Okay.
Can I just ask one question?
Of course.
I'm curious about whether, like, you've mentioned the lack of consultation in this process, and that there are things in the bill that are not at all well-defined. Is there merit in delaying this legislation until parts of the legislation have been clarified, that there's been a strategy written, that there are definitions included, and that there's been appropriate consultation with, well, it seems like all parts of affected civil society are concerned about not having had their say? So what's your sense about this bill actually needing to be delayed?
From the Ecological Consultants Association perspective, yes, I think it should be delayed until we can actually look through this properly. Otherwise, we're going to just repeat the same mistake as when this bill came in in the first place, where it's not quite finished and there's some issues with it. We need to nut those out before it gets rewritten rather than afterwards. Otherwise, we'll be back here again in a couple of years.
Thank you. Are there other groups that would like to make a comment on that?
Thank you. Are there other groups that would like to make a comment on that? Nope, nope. Okay, thank you.
I suppose it doesn't go to the timelines, but the recommendations obviously would require some delay to be able to appropriately reflect those.
Thank you.
A bit off. Oh, sorry.
No, go ahead, please. Mr Trezais?
Look, I'm just, I guess it's a tricky one because it's a broken system at the moment, as people have pointed out. And there are tweaks that are coming through in this piece of legislation that, in our submission, that may make some incremental improvements, like a focus on avoidance and mitigation. We don't really see that in the current system and/or a legislative process for driving that across offset systems across Australia. But the fundamental issue that is that this bill has some flaws in it and we would actually like to see it strengthened in a number of ways. And so I guess, to that extent, what is the pathway to strengthening the legislation and addressing some of the fundamental flaws that I guess the others on the panel have acknowledged and that are in, I'm assuming, most of our submissions?
Thank you.
Can I just ask, can I just ask your views? I know that we are, I think it goes to the point that clearly all your submissions are really concerned about potentially how little this bill does in terms of reforming such a, you know, in your terms, a broken system. And I don't think it's any secret or surprise that that's a fairly consistent view from every independent report that's looked at the system since it commenced. I'm just curious about what you would say to the fact that none of this bill addresses the view of Henry, that if, or sorry, the Henry review, that if we, if we are going to at all, in earnest, address biodiversity loss and try and reverse the trajectory, that biodiversity conservation legislation in the scheme of all legislation would need to have primacy. Is that something, I know that's not what has technically been asked here, but given your submissions are critical of what we're looking at, I'd be very interested in your view around that point of his review, which seemed to be so important. Yeah, please, Ms Hogan.
I'll jump in first. I think there is a general view that it would be good for the biodiversity legislation to have supremacy. There is a lot of confusion between different laws as to which one does in different situations and that causes some of the inconsistency of application that we do see. I think in making it supreme to that extent, it's important to look at how it is going to be implemented because one thing that consultants are regularly having to explain to clients is how is the system fair? And that's something that doesn't get well addressed in the system and it's inherent to some extent that some people will have higher values on their land than other people and so they are then burdened more than other people by the implications of the scheme. It would be good to consider that as part of the process of making it supreme. So we need, so we have that high level of biodiversity conservation, but the cost of that is not borne by individuals at a small scale.
Yes, please, go ahead.
I'll just add to Rebecca's statement there. If we're looking at making everything better, there are loopholes in how native vegetation is managed through the RFS Act and the Local Land Services Act and potentially with state significant developments and infrastructure here. So I think we need to address all of these instruments and look at the interaction between them because it's quite complex. And there are, there's definitely, if you want to stop falling through the gaps, we really need to close up some of the issues between these integrations.
Yes, please, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to add that, I mean, the bottom line is, you know, these approaches have, nature has always come second or third or worse in decision-making. And that's why we see net losses of tens of thousands of hectares of threatened species habitat, you know, every year. Hundreds of thousands, Australia-wide, and that's in net terms. So it's, yeah, absolutely, it's self-evident that we cannot keep doing what we're doing and get anywhere close to even genuine no-net loss, let alone actually turning that ship around. Something really significant needs to change. And I think that's partly why a lot of people might have been a little shocked that this bill, despite the ample evidence of the problems with the offsetting system, is really tinkering around the edges.
Just on that, can I ask you, in, so in terms of trying to achieve the objectives of turning the trajectory around, even if we're here tinkering with the bill, I think it was in the Wentworth submission, you say, you know, as an absolute minimum, any offset that does take place must be like-for-like. I would just be interested in your views around your knowledge or experience in relation to variations and how the scheme even permits like-for-like, not like-for-like at the outset. And when we look at the integrity principles of an offset scheme, when we're looking internationally and elsewhere, like-for-like is a rule. So what is your understanding of how we've got here with this system? And I recognise reports have tried to identify this, but I'd be interested in your views on the like-for-like. And I'm happy if you want to also comment on red flags in the system as well.
I would also love to know how we got here because when I speak to my colleagues internationally and, you know, I was involved in the writing of the first international policy around biodiversity offsets and the establishment of those best practice principles, often they think of New South Wales, they've heard, well, that's a place that does best practice, isn't it? When they actually look at the practice as it is, they're quite shocked at the performance and the failure to adhere to international best practice. So the fact that impacts, that the variation rules appear to my reading to allow, you know, koalas to be exchanged for some other species, you know, how many of one species are worth how many of another species, I find that really baffling. And the like-for-like rules are there for a really good reason. They're not arbitrary. It's to make sure that this approach of offsetting responds to the entities that we have decided are important to maintain and are threatened with extinction. So the idea that some of those things that we've decided we need to conserve and recover, actually, they can be lost in exchange for others, really is baffling to me. And I'd love to know of how that really plays out in reality.
I can add here, it's become very apparent that there are lots of things written into both the existing legislation and some of the fixes that are proposed in the amendment. But these are ministerial changes or stipulations that don't really have anything to do with the environment. And I would suggest that something like the variation rules, the reason they exist is because the fund is going to be taking on a lot of that offset obligation from developers. And when, we've already seen how they've been stuck with this massive load of credits that they need to acquire and acquit. It's going to be very hard for them to do that, like-for-like, because you're requiring involuntary entry into offsetting. So there's no guarantee that you're ever going to have koalas put up when you've got koalas taken out. You're going to end up with, particularly on the vegetation side of the credits, like, that's where I think that that mechanism was put in place to give the fund flexibility to actually equip their obligations. But we've seen changes recently in the owl survey guidelines, for instance, where they've massively expanded the amount of credits that you can generate off or the size of species polygons around owl records. And the only reason for doing that, and they've admitted it in some of the feedback, is basically there's not enough, there's not enough vegetation out there to offset the number of owl credits that the fund has taken on in the first, what, now, seven years of its operation. So they've had to change how you, how many credits you can generate per owl in order to meet that obligation. But that's, that's an ministerial change that has no biological relevance whatsoever. And there's a number of things in this which seem to be operating the same way.
Thank you. Professor Maron?
Oh, I'm just listening to Andrew and it's really horrifying to hear that evidence. I'm not that familiar with that way that those issues have played out in New South Wales. But, you know, that, those sorts of accounting tricks are exactly the problem here. I think that the biggest issue here is that the system is taking offsetting, not even offsetting, but payments as the solution and they're going to retrofit the system so that it looks like that's the solution to all the problems. And they're just not, offsets, even properly done offsets, and we're not here, we're not even talking about appropriately done offsets. We're talking about accounting tricks. So wildlife suffers. But even if they were being done properly, they have a really, really narrow domain, which in which, which in, let me try again, within which they can work and actually deliver a gain that can legitimately be exchanged for a loss. It's really small. There are a lot of things we cannot offset. And that's not a matter of we just need to, you know, drum up enough landholders. There are ecological limitations. There are limitations of reality. And then there are limitations of practicality. I mean, if you think about trying to counter, trying to offset the loss of a large old hollow tree that took many hundreds of years to form. Okay, hypothetically, if the species we're worried about uses artificial nest boxes, you can give those a go, but you're going to have to make sure that they stay standing and are maintained, do not, aren't destroyed, aren't damaged, remain suitable for that species also for hundreds of years. Now, the cost of that is, you know, it's a practical limitation. So really, I think the problem is that we just don't set limits. We, and I say we because here I am in Queensland, we have the exact same problem. The fund will accept offset payments in lieu of actually delivering an offset and then suddenly discover, whoops, this isn't something that we can offset. And there are no safeguards. There are no checks. There are no feedbacks to prevent this from happening.
Thank you. Mr Trezais?
Thanks. I was just going to add to this that, like, offsets have, I guess, two, when we look at it as a market or we look at it as a, the system, there are two types of supply-side constraints. And so your original question, why, what's the driver to relaxing like-for-like? It's those two different sides of the supply-side constraints that we see. So supply-side constraint A is that there aren't enough offsets in the system. And so the example that Andrew gave where there's an accrual of these credits, you've got to find flexibility, otherwise the money just keeps building up and that drives the variation rules. But Martine made a really important point, which is that the other constraint, and this is probably the bigger constraint in reality, is that the reality of recreating ecosystems, the reality of actually compensating, and we're talking about trying to recreate and compensate, there are ecological limits to this. And so what is scientifically feasible to do in an ecologically relevant timeframe? Just reinforcing Professor Maron's point, there is a whole bunch of stuff that is not offsettable. And so we need to shift our mindset around where we are looking to put developments. And so the offsets discussion very quickly merges into a planning discussion and where we put developments, how we design developments in the state. And it talks, and the country, so it talks to a failure of the overall system and where offsets sit within that. But all we see from, from across Australia is offset systems being designed to try and deal with these supply-side constraints, whether it's the inappropriate pricing of offsets. And so, you know, they don't actually reflect the true cost of restoring and recreating ecosystems or to creating flexibility and relaxing like-for-like requirements to increase fungibility and lower transaction costs. And basically increasing the liquidity of the offset market makes it easier for developers to go wherever they like because it means that, as Martine said, you could try and koala credits for something else. And once we're running up against things like regent honeyeater credits, you know, we don't have a lot of those birds left in reality.
So are you suggesting as well, in all of this, there absolutely should be no-go zones? And that should be something, yep, I'm seeing heads nod. Have you got a view on no-go zones? How we do that, where that, where they appear and how we apply, you know? Any views on that? Yes, please, Ms Madaris.
Sorry, struggling to unmute there. Look, I think you've got a great starting point. If you look at the 11 categories of land type that can be included on the biodiversity values map to inform where you start to try to identify those things that are irreplaceable. There is significant gaps in that mapping already and there needs to be a more comprehensive look at those 11 categories that include, you know, which species and ecological communities may be subject to serious environmental impacts. But there's also a range of, you know, outstanding ecological values and particular forest types and other ecological systems in there that can actually be looked at. If you start there and try to build out from that and identify within those categories in that existing framework, where is there potential replaceability to go to the Biodiversity Council's point of the list of, you know, what things do we know with a fair degree of certainty can actually be offset? Or on the flip side, have a look at those things, what do we know definitely can't be offset? There's going to be a whole range of entities that fall in the middle as well that are protected under legislation, but we're not quite sure whether or not they can or can't be offset. I think we have to apply a precautionary principle in that case and really look to see, can we find the evidence to suggest that they could be offset? If we can't, we need to prohibit further development or expansion in those areas or that will impact those entities until we can identify ways to replace them if they are to be lost. And I think this kind of goes back to the complexity of what we're actually trying to do here. Are we trying to increase the market and create a way for development to be more sustainable or have lower impacts? I mean, absolutely yes. But how does that play out with, you know, markets around the repair and restoration of nature? And there's all sorts of opportunities for emerging markets here. And it's very, you know, careful, I guess, balance it has to be played. But I think there are ways that you can investigate further and look for those no-go zones.
Thank you. I'll go Professor Maron and then to Mr Trezais.
Yeah, couldn't have said it better, Debbie. The thing I'd add is that I feel that there is, there's been discussions around terminology. You know, this, the particular net outcome that we're trying to achieve here, is it no net loss? Is it net positive? Is it nature positive? Do we want to preserve the option to be nature positive? If we do want to be nature positive, nature positive, as I'm sure you've heard many times, means an absolute increase in the value of biodiversity over time relative to 2020. So at the project level, what that would mean is if you were to do an offset in a nature-positive-aligned way, it means that you can only do an offset that means there is more biodiversity after the development than before it, which is not what we do now. That's not actually what no net loss means, but it's also not what net positive means either. Depending on how we choose to define it, as Debbie says, it can also mean that we are preventing the loss of biodiversity that we think would otherwise have been lost. There's still less biodiversity afterwards, but not as much less as if we hadn't done that protection. Now, that's not aligned with a nature-positive future. If we did choose the, you know, to go in the same direction that the rest of the world is and set ourselves a goal of absolute, like, nature-positive, absolute net gain rather than like this relative to what would otherwise have happened type of net gain, then that tells you really clearly where your no-go zones are. Because basically, if you can't make more of that biodiversity value, then you can't destroy it. And it's as simple as that. And there's been some work recently, by the way, done, that was commissioned by the Queensland Conservation Council led by Professor James Watson and Dr Michelle Ward and involving quite a lot of people, that has demonstrated how you could do that mapping.
Thank you. Mr Trezais?
I'll be relatively brief. So I think to answer to your first question, no-go zones, absolutely, we would support that. And Professor Maron just outlined some recent analysis. But I think there is also existing mechanisms under the BC Act that are underutilized, such as areas of outstanding biodiversity value. And it's currently only four areas listed on that. I could think of 50 areas in New South Wales that are of outstanding more, of outstanding biodiversity value. And so I think, you know, biodiversity value. Um, and so I think, you know, how can we explore how to use existing mechanisms to identify and map, uh, critical habitats, really important areas that should be off limits from offsets, uh, as a first point. And as the second point, um, Debbie mentioned, um, we've proposed a permitted list for biodiversity offsets and so that is where we know that they work. And so even though we've been doing them for 10 to 15 years, it's still an experiment. We're still, you know, trying to work out what ecosystems can we recreate? And actually, it, 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 it's relatively simple to recreate, um, certain types of habitats and other types, it's almost impossible. Um, and so that should be telling us, that's the market. If you were to apply a pure market approach and take Ipart's recommendation where you drop away a pay-to-play, um, mechanism. So that is to say, you can't pay into a fund, you have to go out and source your own offsets. If the market was functioning truly, uh, as it was intended to, it would tell us that actually these things are really hard to create, they're really, really expensive. And actually, that's going to drive proponents to avoid and mitigate, uh, those types of impacts. Uh, but back to your previous point, that's why there's all these provisions, variations to relax like-for-like requirements to enable things to go where they, ever they want to, and that results in the overall running down of our, um, natural capital in the state.
Thank you. Ms. Hogan.
Yeah, so my point just sort of follows on a little bit, uh, from what's just been discussed. But it's just in relation to, I guess, consulting with industry again, when you're looking at identifying no-go areas and particularly if you're looking at which species should be having habitat set aside as no-go. Uh, obviously some species we know respond to management better than others. Some species will use nest boxes, some won't. Some will occupy regenerating habitats and some are much more um, reliant on old growth habitats. So that information i- is a database that we're building up over time. It's not complete and probably never will be, but it's, it's getting there. But what also feeds into this is some species are much easier to survey than others. And this is a practical consideration that we're finding as consultants. So some species, uh, that perhaps are not necessarily as threatened as others, but they may have no credits coming onto the market at all for offsetting because they're just expensive to offset. And so people setting up stewardship sites don't see the value in paying for those surveys to be done on the off chance they might be found. And then particularly if there's not really any significant value in the cost of the credit for them to pass on, there's no financial benefit for somebody to survey for those species. So I think that's something that needs to be considered when identifying what's happening with no-go areas. If there's no credits being created or no protection being offered to some species because we don't know where they are, then those species perhaps need a higher level of protection in their environment when they are found than what might be otherwise offered by their status or some other consideration.
Thank you. I've been hogging all the questions. My colleagues have some. I'm gonna just go, um, to Ms. Mitchell and then I'll go to Mr. Lawrence.
Thank you. Thanks, Chair. I just wanted to get clarity just from the Wentworth Group submission. Um, you were talking about sort of the no-go zones, which I think goes to your part. I think it's four, where you talk about irre- irreplaceable biodiversity values. But I was curious where you said, um, basically in those sort of areas refuse or developments, except in exception, exceptional circumstances of national public interest. What would be the sort of project that you think would, would qualify to be, I guess, accepted under those circumstances?
I thought of that when I read the submission.
But I was just curious about, yeah, what's the threshold, I guess, in terms of your perspective?
Um, yeah, um, look, I'm happy to jump in there. Um, look, there's certain situations that are going to be really obvious, I think, in this scenario. Things like national, national, sorry, emergencies that might warrant irreversible environmental destruction. And we are talking irreversible biodiversity instruction is, destruction is what we're actually considering allowing here. Um, but there are going to be times where there is no alternative. I'm thinking about things like measures to limit the severity or extent of extreme fire or flood events or things like that, for example. Um, I think, you know, I can't give you a comprehensive list. I think there are some things though that are quite intuitive, um, when it's an action that's critical to, you know, sustaining human life, um, for example, or limiting the extent, potentially extent or likely extent of destruction of nature by preventing these kind of, um, extreme events from spreading. That would be one example.
Thank you. And then just one, uh, uh, quick one to the Ecological Consultants Association. Um, I was quite concerned, um, to see in your submission, some of the data you had around the stress levels of, of people working, um, in your industry and with all the different legislative changes. One of the things we heard from early witnesses when we had a hearing last week, particularly local government, was actually the need to have more expertise in ecology, particularly in small councils or regional areas where they need that assistance. Um, is there anything that the government could be doing to really help, I guess, your, your workforce or your sector in terms of maintaining, um, I guess, professional support, but also so you don't have ecologists leaving the industry, which your data kind of indicates that, that that is a serious concern?
Yeah, uh, absolutely. Thank you for picking up on that. Uh, what we've identified is the stress is caused largely by the, the frequent changes to the legislation. And this is because as we've been discussing, the legislation came in full of flaws to start with and we've been constantly tweaking and updating ever since then. The result of that is consultants are dealing with, uh, projects that just are continually needing updates done so that we don't get them out the door. Every time you, you wait for another update and then you update that and then by the time you get that one done, another one's come in. And so the process is going on and that's just causing a lot of stress. It's also causing uncertainty because there's been, uh, that, that concern that you may have missed a change or an update or a database change and then getting picked up on something that you've missed when there's just so many changes and so much going on and no clear notification process for a lot of these. That places a lot of stress on consultants that really are genuinely trying to do the right thing and keep up to date. But it's very, very difficult. And when you've got a lot of projects across different regions and all of these changes are coming through, that makes it hard. The other sort of consideration, it, and I think where we're looking at is if, if the industry was consulted, consulted more during the development, a lot of these policies, these flaws wouldn't be there in the first place. So we wouldn't then be needing all of these constant tweaks and updates to fix them. So if we had a legisla- and, and a lot of the tweaks are frustrating because they're things that we could have identified from the outset that we would have known, we, we would have said, oh, this is how this is going to be implemented. This is a problem. Let's fix this. Which could have gone out before it went out. And then of course, because we're doing these changes afterwards, then you've got different versions of legislation and policies, different guidelines. People are still working on old ones, people that are working on the new ones. Then we need our consent authorities to be up to date on it as well, so that they're also reviewing your report in the context in which your report was written. So I, I think it all comes back to consultation. That's really what we're pushing with this is we feel if, if there is consultation that will really help, but it needs to be genuine. And, and what we tend to find is that we'll be sent a, a draft bill or a draft thing like in this case and said, oh, submission's closed in two weeks. Now, you know, we're, we're not paid, we're, we're not paid to be on the, on the Ecological Consultants Association. We're volunteers, give our time to that. We run businesses and to then suddenly have a two-week timeframe to respond to a complex piece of legislation, provide meaningful advice, particularly when it's already been almost completely drafted. It's, that's not genuine in our minds. What we would like to be involved at the outset, at the conceptual phase, you know, we're going to introduce this new guideline. What are the key things we need to consider? And then if we're involved in that process, we can make sure that it's going to be implemented correctly and that we're going to pick up, um, unintended consequences because some of these policies have come in and then there's unintended consequences that the department wasn't aware would happen because they hadn't considered what would happen in a particular type of development. And that's where we can really provide that information. We'll, we'll spot loopholes before the department will in, in this because this is the space that we work in. So we can iron that out first. And I think that will then go moving forward to resolving a lot of these stress issues.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Chair.
Mr. Lawrence.
Thanks, Chair, and thanks everyone for your evidence and submissions and the work you do. Uh, first question for the biodiversity council and it is, what do you think the best application of the avoid, minimize and offset hierarchy looks like? And can you provide some information and details about that?
Uh, sure. Thanks for the question. I guess from what it looks like is, um, uh, a proper set of incentives and signals to developers and proponents about where they should be focusing their efforts really upfront and early in the design process. And I reckon a lot of, and I'd be interested actually in the ECA's view on this. Um, uh, a lot of the challenges with uh, environmental regulation are where, uh, you end up in a path dependent process and, you know, someone's locked in on a particular site or in a particular way of doing things. And then actually they haven't factored in biodiversity until well down the track and they're starting to chase project finance and I'll just put a caveat around that, that once upon a time I was an environmental regulator, so experienced that firsthand. Um, but from the context of this legislation, I think it is novel in the sense that it is creating a register and asking proponents to identify how they will, uh, demonstrate avoid, avoidance and mitigation measures, which is new. Um, but I guess one of the things we need to explore is how can we make sure that that is going to be effective and drive, um, those actions? And so what are the alternatives that are put forward? How do they demonstrate those avoidance and mitigation measures in a, in an earnest sense, rather than kind of, uh, for want of a better word, greenwashing, greenwashing those exercises just to justify their preferred site for economic reasons?
Okay, thanks for that.
One of the concerns we've got, I mean, I think it's great having that hierarchy written into the legislation and then having it, you know, enforced in a, to a greater extent. Um, but on ground, this is possibly something that's going to be difficult to implement because at what point do people pick up on, okay, we have to demonstrate this avoid and minimize. So why don't we say, you know, say a major project, mining project, you go, I want to do all this area and like we've stripped it back down to this little area. You go, well, realistically, that was the only place they were going to do it anyway. But are we, are we just going to have this artificial inflation of project sizes? Um, for the justification of, of reducing the footprint. Um, uh, I, I could see this being probably more applicable in and sort of housing stuff up and down the east coast, potentially compared to some of the mining projects west of the divide.
Okay, thanks for that. And then a question for the Wentworth, uh, group. In your submission, you talk about refusing all proposals with serious and irreversible impacts, except in, except in, oh no, so that's basically been asked actually. Sorry. Um, you recommend prohibiting development where a credit type can't be found in the market? Do you think this prohibition would occur too late in the planning process, being so close to the final development consent decision?
Um, so I think that's why our recommendation is the ideal is to identify what is irreplaceable from the outset and actually have that information available. Um, also to encourage early engagement with proponents, with development proponents, um, people to clearing particular areas so that they do know where these irreplaceable entities are known or likely to exist and they know how to get that information, how to work with consultants. And again, very curious to hear about how this might work from, on the ground from an ECA perspective. Um, but if I can get that information early about how to either know where these irreplaceable things have been identified already or what you need to do, what kind of surveys and, um, research you need to do to identify whether or not they may occur in the things, the areas that you're looking at, so you can avoid early on.
Thanks, that's helpful. And for the ECA, uh, can you talk to us about how often there are different interpretations of the biodiversity assessment method and how they're usually resolved between assessors and government?
Um, I don't know. There's definitely some issues or have been in, in the past seven years, issues with either definitions of things or when, when the guidelines are published by the department, the way those guidelines are interpreted or worded is not always that great. Uh, and we, we see some sort of different interpretation around. Um, this mainly the survey effort, uh, that might need to be applied for something like that. But we're having issues as well with people on the other side of the desk being the consent authorities, not really understanding or not recognizing the experience of consultants who, you know, for instance, I've had, I've had projects sent back saying, oh, you need to include eastern pygmy possum. You go, it's a cow paddock with like a couple of paddock trees in it. It's, it's not sufficient habitat for that species. And there is actually a mechanism in, in the boss for accredited assessors to make the judgment call that that habitat is not, that, that it's degraded, uh, uh, and not sufficient to house that species. Yet I've sat across the desk from the consent authority, who is the department in this instance, who've argued with me saying, no, you can't use, you can't use the degraded function that exists in the BAM calculator, uh, unless there's a habitat constraint. So that's, that's not true at all. The legislation, the, the boss is very clear about when this tool can be used. Habitat, habitat constraints are one thing. Habitat degraded is another. Uh, and we've had, been sent back to modify the project, um, by an erroneous interpretation of the boss from the department side. And, and this really speaks to why we have great issues with the Environment Agency head being able to dictate how we write our reports and, and the changes that we need to make to our reports. And a- as an accredited assessor, you operate to the code of conduct, um, where you must provide a truthful opinion and operate within the field of your expertise and your competence. How, how can we have mandated changes put upon us? Therefore, you know, if I have to rewrite something that I don't agree with, well, it's not my truthful opinion. And on top of that, if it's being directed by the Environment Agency head who's not an on-the-ground ecologist, I would suggest that they're probably operating outside the field of their competence.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Um, Ms. Hogan, did you want to add something? Your hand's up there. I know we're out of time, but, but please do.
I was going to add, I, I might just leave it with what Andrew has said now.
Okay, I'm afraid our time has come to an end. Um, we are incredibly grateful for your um, expertise and insights and your evidence today and thank you for your submissions and really, we hear loud and clear, Ms. Hogan, about the, um, you know, the time and just how difficult it is to respond. So we are really, really grateful for your responses and for being here today. If there are any further matters, the Secretariat will be in contact with you. Um, and thank you, all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, we'll take a short break, um, and be back in 12 minutes. Right, we'll take a short break um and be back in 12 minutes.
Thank you, welcome back. And we have some more witnesses and attending by video conference. Thank you very much. Could I get both of you to please state your name, position, title, and then swear either an oath or affirmation, which would have been provided to you by the secretariat? And we'll start with you, if we could, Ms Flint. If you haven't got, Ms Flint, if you haven't got the...
Can you hear me now?
Yes, perfect, can do.
Yep.
Fabulous.
My microphone wasn't working, sorry. Yes, no, I've got it.
Thank you.
Yep, my microphone's doing. Great, thank you. So yes, my name's Carmel Flint. I'm a national coordinator with Lock the Gate Alliance. And I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you very much. Mr Cornish.
Thank you Chair. My name's Michael Cornish. I'm the Policy Lead with the Australian Land Conservation Alliance. And I also solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. And would either of you like to start by making a short opening statement?
Yes, I have a short statement.
Thank you, please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So thanks for the opportunity to present today. And the new South Wales biodiversity outlook was released with sort of zero fanfare in May this year, but it found that only 50% of threatened species are expected to survive the next 100 years. So in that very dire context, our primary concern with this bill is that it really falls short of Dr Henry's review's independent review of the Biodiversity Conservation Act. And it really is only tinkering around the edges of what is a very broken system. Notably, it doesn't deliver on the most important recommendations, which Dr Henry made, such as a concurrents role and no-go zones. And it really doesn't give a primacy to the Biodiversity Conservation Act over other pieces of legislation. So as a result, we're really concerned that it's not adequate to address the rapid deterioration in biodiversity in New South Wales. The focus on offsets, in our view, is very problematic because the central premise of biodiversity offsets is flawed and it inevitably leads to a net loss of biodiversity. If so-called high-quality offsets are used, which are existing areas of habitat in good condition, which may be earmarked for biodiversity stewardship, the result is simply less habitat than existed previously because new clearing approvals have been granted in return for an offset site that already existed. But the overall outcome is net loss of habitat. There are equally problematic issues with using low-quality offsets in the form of committing to regenerate already cleared or highly degraded patches of land in return for obtaining approval to clear vegetation. It's really hard to regenerate degraded habitats with confidence. It takes a lot of time and there's a lag to providing habitat. And they're prone to stochastic events such as floods, fire and drought that are now becoming more common with climate change. Though offsets fundamentally facilitate habitat clearing and fragmentation, which are two of the greatest recognized threats to biodiversity. That's why the law in New South Wales, in our view, if it's to genuinely address the biodiversity crisis, must drop offsets and break the nexus between approvals to destroy habitat and biodiversity stewardship elsewhere. In our view, what's needed is a general levy on all developments that can then be used to incentivise stewardship without it being linked to and predicated on approvals to clear habitat for development. So a major problem with the current laws are that most of the measures are restricted to entities defined as being at risk of serious and irreversible impacts. This equates essentially, according to the department's own guidance, to the critically endangered category under the IUCN framework. So these are the most severely threatened entities that are already right on the brink of extinction. The problem is that taking action at this stage is very, very often far too late. Only a very small portion of all the vulnerable endangered species in New South Wales are recognised as critically endangered or as species at risk of serious and irreversible impacts. So this approach severely limits the consideration of species in terms of the biodiversity framework that's in place in New South Wales currently. Even the koala isn't currently listed as a serious and irreversible impact species by the department at the moment. So in our view, biodiversity conservation has to focus on preventing species re- into endangered status. And the way to do that is to prevent habitat clearing for species that are vulnerable or endangered, but not yet critically endangered as well. So notably, even though the serious and irreversible impact status is so limited to only the most endangered entities, it still doesn't lead to an automatic refusal of approval for state significant projects and infrastructure. And decision makers can still approve destruction for those entities with additional measures. So in our view, we'd really like to see a mandatory refusal of all state significant projects that will cause serious and irreversible impacts to those most endangered entities. But we want to see stronger predictions for all other threatened entities that are not critically endangered through a statutory no-go zone map or equivalent means, and an end to offsets as a measure to facilitate clearing and development. Finally, in terms of the whole package of reforms here, we at Lock the Gate welcome the New South Wales Government's commitment to mine rehabilitation not being allowed to be used as an offset in the future. But we're worried that's not going to happen until a subsequent regulation, which we haven't yet seen. We're also concerned that there are a number of mines that have been approved on the basis of these deeply flawed rehabilitation offsets. So we're really keen to see an audit of projects where this has been used and an approach taken to very conditions so they cannot be relied on going forward. Thank you, that's me done.
Thank you very much. And Mr Cornish, did you want to make an opening statement?
If I may Chair.
Yeah, please do.
Yes, thank you, I'll try to be quick. The Australian Land Conservation Alliance, also known as ALCO for short, is the peak national body representing organisations that work to conserve, manage and restore nature on privately managed land. So we represent our members and support us to grow the impact capacity and influence of private land conservation to achieve a healthy and resilient Australia. We do face the harsh but unbending reality that nature's not an infinite asset that can be continually drawn upon without profound social, economic and environmental cost. We must avoid as much further destruction as possible and invest heavily in its renewables. Our unique nature is not only core to our social and cultural values as a nation, it's also a cornerstone of our prosperity, with half of Australia's GDP being moderately to highly dependent on nature. Sadly, various state and federal state of environment reports detail that Australian nature is in accelerating decline. So Australian governments, New South Wales Government included, must therefore adopt genuinely absolute net positive approaches to its social, environmental and economic development. As an organisation, we've been long critical of environmental offsetting schemes across Australia for not delivering in practice on the theoretical promise of compensating for the destruction of our nature. And we therefore strongly welcome the New South Wales Government's support for a net positive transition for biodiversity, for its biodiversity offsetting scheme. However, we would argue this should be an absolute net positive transition rather than net positive, i.e. that means delivering an absolute improvement in biodiversity relative to its current situation, rather than simply a slower rate of decline than otherwise is occurring. Further, the bill needs a clear timeline for the net positive transition that is promised to be implemented, as currently this is missing. The bill does not include all four steps of the mitigation hierarchy. It's missing the restore/rehabilitate step that is included in the general Australian and international consensus on mitigation hierarchies, namely the requirement that measures taken to rehabilitate degraded ecosystems or restore cleared ecosystems fall exposure to impacts that cannot be completely avoided and/or minimised. Although restoration/rehabilitation can come with its own challenges, it's still a useful option to make available. And our view is that the bill should adopt the standard consensus approach and therefore include it as a step. Lastly, in fact, this is the biggest issue of concern. Whilst the new three-year requirement for an offset credit to be applied is welcome, the bill does not take the very important step for requiring that an on-ground biodiversity offset is actually possible or available before allowing an offset payment to proceed. And so without fixing this issue, the three-year requirement will not ultimately drive improved outcomes for nature. So thank you again for the opportunity to present, and I look forward to your questions.
Thank you very much. Mr Lawrence, do you... I'll hand over to you.
Yep, sure, I can go first.
Thank you. Otherwise I'll just hog the thing again.
You wouldn't do that. So firstly, for the Australian Land Conservation Alliance, Mr Cornish, could you elaborate on your recommendation around legislating a standard mitigation hierarchy and why this should include a reference to restoration and rehabilitation? And how would that work in practice in the development application process?
Sure. So the international consensus, as per the International Union for Conservation of Nature and other sources, is that a standard mitigation hierarchy is those four steps. So avoid, then minimise, then restore/rehabilitate and then offset. So you know, the payment at the end. And so the reason for including it is that, you know, there are occurrences where doing restoration on land that might be, for example, temporarily impacted may be a better approach than trying to secure an offset in another location. And so, for example, that might be where there might be temporary clearance for a track in order to be able to access a particular development location. It may be if you're storing construction materials on a particular site, but the seed bank is largely intact and so you can remove all that, all those materials and, you know, and help foster, you know, restoration/rehabilitation to occur. Now, it is very unlikely to be appropriate in cases where you might have, for example, the equivalent of a clear field, you know, something that doesn't have an existing seed bank that can recover reasonably easily or with some limited assistance. But as I say, in certain circumstances, it's appropriate.
Sure, thank you. And then for Lock the Gate, you say in your submission that even good quality offsets do not represent a conservation gain as they already exist. But we're told there is significant investment in the stewardship sites where pests and weeds are removed. There's revegetation and other improvements. And that this is all calculated to ensure there is no net loss. What's your view on that?
Our view is that in reality, really, whilst there are some slight improvements from those kinds of measures, and they're important, they can't compensate for destroying intact habitat. You just end up with a net loss of the area of habitat. And so slight improvement in one patch of veg versus the, you know, clearing and destruction of another patch just doesn't really stack up, in our view.
Sure. And just lastly, for Lock the Gate, you raise in your submission the need for no-go zones. And I'm just wondering, how would that be applied whilst also allowing for the development of critical renewable energy infrastructure?
Well, I think, first of all, it's a step to have a look and identify no-go zones. At the moment, obviously, there's a bunch of places where renewables are being developed without impacts on biodiversity and other things. So in our view, there's, you know, the problem we've always had with coal mining is that developments can occur anywhere and the community's views are not taken into account well. And the various impacts on all the different values on water and biodiversity and farmland aren't well considered. So we really want, in terms of the renewables rollout, for that to be done better. So I think, you know, not impacting heavily on biodiversity and those other values is also important for renewables.
Sure, thank you. And just lastly, back to the Land Conservation Alliance. In your submission, you speak of more of the need for more specifics in the strategy towards net positive offsets. I'm just wondering if you could expand on that, this need for more specifics?
Yeah, sure. I mean, I guess, I guess what we're really meaning then is more of a schedule or a timeline, a requirement for either the strategy to be handed down and/or timeline for it to be implemented. Now, we recognise, I mean, in a perfect world, you'd have a strategy, you know, already done and referred to, you know, within the legislation in more detail. We know that's not in place yet. But that's, you know, but given that's the case, having a clear articulated timeline would be very helpful. Also, a definition of what a net positive transition actually is would be helpful as well.
Sure, thank you. Just one more, if I could Chair. Also, for Lock the Gate, you welcome the government's decision to remove mine rehabilitation as an offset. But you've also requested an audit of projects where this has been used. And I'm just wondering, could you explain why you want that information?
Yeah, well, I guess it's obviously a sort of deeply flawed thing to suggest that you could clear a whole mine, dig a mine, dig a mine pit, and then suggest that you could rehabilitate, you know, critically endangered ecosystem in that area. And yet, under the previous system, mines were allowed to use that as a basis to clear land on the basis that they would create this rehabilitation offset in the future. So really, what we're looking for is an understanding of how many times that was used, that mechanism, how many mines were approved on the basis of that type of an offset. And then to identify what can be done to, in our view, change the conditions so that that can't be relied on as a basis for that mine to continue.
Thanks, Ms Flint, thanks Chair.
Thank you. Ms Flint, I would love to hear a little bit more on this notion of separating the offset requirement from the development and this idea of a levy. I'm just trying to understand what that would look like. I realise that it's potentially not directly what's proposed, what's not proposed here in the bill, but it's an interesting concept. And I suppose I'm asking for the elaboration because there seems to be a fairly broad view that this bill is not necessarily going to achieve the things that we need to achieve in order to reverse the trajectory of biodiversity loss. What is this notion of separating the offset from the development?
Thanks Chair. Yes, I think that we've struggled with this for a long time because we're big supporters of incentives for biodiversity stewardship for farmers and communities. So we think that's incredibly important. It delivers incredibly good outcomes. We want it to be incentivised. But we don't believe it should be incentivised at the expense of clearing bushland elsewhere. And so our view is that you have to break that nexus. So while they're connected, then, yeah, there's this impetus to approve clearing and development in order to, for folks to be able to do biodiversity stewardship. We just don't think they should be connected in any way. And we think that it's going to be problematic until that nexus is broken in terms of achieving the biodiversity outcomes that we need in New South Wales. So in our view, the best way, potentially, a way to do it could be to impose a general levy on all development. And then that levy is what funds biodiversity stewardship agreements, for landholders to be able to get on and do the good work they do. So that's, that's pretty much the gist of it. I don't think we've thought in detail about the mechanism, but we've just struggled with feeling like we need a different mechanism. And that offsets inherently create that nexus between these two things.
So it's essentially, essentially taking out that market component of it and actually going back to the raw, this is what it costs to do it. And the government becomes responsible or whomever becomes responsible for the biodiversity improvements and outcomes elsewhere. And it's a separate, yeah, I understand. I think I understand.
Yes, so sort of raising that money from developers, but not in return for getting approval for a development. It's then, it's then just, it becomes, I guess, some kind of fund that could fund biodiversity stewardship agreements directly. So it's got a bit of a market element, but it just doesn't have the link to the approval.
And so just on the serious and irreversible impacts, we heard earlier from, I think it might have been the Mid North Council, but there was a suggestion that, you know, the categories already are incredibly broad in terms of, sorry, the matters and entities are already, that are, the listed entities are already very broad and that any further broadening of what constitutes or what is a serious and irreversible impact on a matter is already adequate. But you're suggesting that's not the case?
No, definitely not. I mean, the department itself says in its guidance quite clearly that the categories for serious and irreversible impact are equivalent to the category of critically endangered under the IUCN framework. So for example, that's sort of something that has experienced like an 80% population decline in 10 years. Or that's over 90% cleared. So we're talking about things that are right on the brink, entities that are already extremely endangered. And in our view, that is a subset. I mean, the original Threatened Species Act in New South Wales was set up to protect vulnerable and endangered species. And now we seem to be at a point where, after all these years, we're actually at a point where it shifted down to only look at a very small subset of those and the most endangered subset. But it can be too late. And unless we're starting to think about those entities that are, that are not as far down the extinction sort of pathway, then we're not going to do anything to address it.
And just finally, before I head to my other colleagues, do, and I'd like to hear from both of you, do you think this bill is going to make any significant inroad or any inroad into assisting the mission of reversing the trend of extinction and the trajectory of biodiversity loss?
I can't see it based on Dr Henry's review and the scale of the recommendations he made compared to what's in this bill. So I don't have any confidence, no.
Look, the bill was certainly successful. The reality is that we don't have a better system of dealing with development in an offsetting system of some sort. Fundamental problem facing this offsetting scheme in New South Wales is that you don't have to ensure that there is an availability of an offset in reality before the development can proceed. So that means that even if it's not possible to protect or recreate, you know, habitat elsewhere, you can still proceed with development, except in the most, I guess, egregious of examples where something is just stopped altogether. Now, until you have, I guess, a pre-approved, you know, a condition before you get approval that there has to be an offset available, you know, an on-ground offset available in practice, you're going to continue to have the fundamental problem here. And, you know, this is why we've seen, not just in New South Wales but in other jurisdictions, the offsetting funds, the funds available for offsetting increasing and increasing, and an inability for departments and agencies to be able to deliver the offsets to essentially discharge that liability.
Thank you. Ms Monroe?
Thank you Chair. So we've heard from, can I say, both sides of the debate in terms of pro-development, let's say, and pro-conservation, that there might be merit in actually delaying this bill until better consultation can occur and that the terms of the bill really can be clarified and give certainty to everybody involved. Could you provide some comment on whether you think that that would be useful to strengthen the bill and provide further clarity?
Look, I think as long as this is perceived as a first step in a broader package of reforms that will come as the rest of the, you know, response to the independent review is implemented, that, yeah, this is a first good step, right? We don't want to pretend that this is going to fix all the problems. It's not. Some of the definitional issues can be easily addressed through some tighter drafting, I think. So around what is a net positive transition, at least articulating what that is, even though we're not going to get the full strategy and the full terms and conditions of exactly what a transition looks like, at least defining the net positive component. And we argue it should be an absolute net positive, but nonetheless, defining what is in the bill would be very helpful. So I don't think that the bill is not salvageable at all, quite the opposite. But it can be, it can be improved. I should also, I guess, just, sorry to interrupt, but I think it's also worth mentioning that, look, you know, in a sense though, this is a consultation process. You know, we have our opportunity to consult. You know, we do get heard, we get to put submissions in. So I don't think it's completely true to say there's no consultation process.
We're just doing the government's work for them.
There's government people here.
Yeah, there is a government person here.
I guess in fairness, there have been multiple reviews into the offsetting scheme, right? You know, we've had the Auditor General's report. We've had a, you know, had a parliamentary inquiry. I'm sure the government has been looking at it in length. We've got this inquiry. So again, as long as this is not seen as the end of reform, but rather the beginning, then it's not, you know, it's not, not something we'd want to delay, what reform is actually in the pipeline.
Thank you. Ms Flint?
Well, I think we, you know, we're keen to see some more robust changes than are proposed in this, in this bill. I don't know whether that needs more time or just more political commitment, not sure. But yeah, we'd definitely like to see some, some much bigger changes. Yep.
Thank you. Ms Mitchell might have some questions?
No, she's, no, she's messaging, yeah. Can I just ask, in terms of how you view the idea of any map tool and register and in terms of third-party engagement with those kind of tools and mechanisms in terms of, because there's, yeah, there's, I think we had some submission about, well, you know, why, why the need for any public register? And what's the purpose of public registers? I'd just be interested in your views on that, given particularly you work with communities and broader, particular cohorts within the community.
Yeah, I think definitely there's an incredible value for communities in being able to access information about these kind of projects and developments. And there's communities who are just so invested in what's happening in their neighbourhood and in their region and who follow things closely and want to have access to that information. They know the most about what's happening in a lot of these areas in terms of the environment and other issues. And so they're really the best people to have that information at their disposal because they can look at what's happening on the ground, what's supposed to be happening and, you know, raise, raise awareness with regulators or whoever else needs to know if something's not matching up. So there's a whole lot of benefits there in communities having this information, in our view. And it just adds a level of rigor that we just really need in this field because we've got huge disparities between the developers, the amount of money they have at their disposal, the legal power they have at their disposal and the communities that have been impacted. And the one thing communities should have access to is information to be able to level that planning field a bit.
Thank you.
Look, whether, whether it's a register or mapping tools or what form the information takes, I mean, it's very hard to argue against increased transparency. So that's certainly a very good thing. I guess what the mapping tool exercise certainly has, you know, highlighted is the importance of trying to get the information loud, you know, as quickly as possible, one go, so that there aren't perverse outcomes where those may see what's come before and maybe the mapping hasn't come to their district yet and they go, right, well, I better, better get clearing before they come mapping here. So, you know, you do want to obviously stage the information release in an appropriate way to avoid perverse outcomes. But look, increased transparency is a, is a good thing. We shouldn't pretend that we have all the biodiversity data that we need, quite the opposite. But having said that, we shouldn't also not use it as an excuse for not using the best available data to make the best decisions we can at the time. So, and that's where, of course, the proportionary principle comes in play where we say, well, you know, we should take all precautions and not, not presume the opposite. You know, we should not presume that, well, if we can't find something, then actually it's okay. So, yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think a big, a big issue with biodiversity data and mapping tools and whatnot is that if they, if they're not public, then it can be really hard for the community to interrogate decisions. So sort of the biodiversity assessment methodology is a bit like that. It's very much a black box. The community gets a sort of output at the end and, you know, you've got these consultants doing the work. And it's just almost impossible to, for the community to stress test it or to understand how conclusions were arrived at. So I think having sort of access to as much data as possible for the community and to any tools is really important because otherwise, again, we end up with this huge disparity. And we don't have that checking that... because otherwise, again, we end up with this huge disparity and we don't have that checking that the community delivers. And to be able to go, oh, wait a minute, you didn't consider this species or you didn't do that. But they can't do that because they can't work out what was actually done. So, that's been a big problem with the current system as well.
I think we heard, we're just coming to the end of the time, but I'll just have one final question. We heard from some of the experts who are accredited assessors that, yeah, that there was a potential push to have more capacity to engage more one-on-one and directly with the department and how the biodiversity assessment methodology and tools are applied and worked. I'm assuming, based on what you've just said then, you would think that is actually quite problematic if we went down that path and that that would reduce the capacity to have oversight ultimately.
Yes, potentially. There's just a little oversight at the moment. It's just, it's a real black box. So, I just think whatever happens, we need to go in the other direction of more transparency and clarity about what the rules are rather than less, more subjectivity and negotiation and less transparency.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's my voice. Oh, my gosh. I'm afraid we've come to the end. We've run out of time. And thank you very much. I don't think there were any matters taken on notice, but if there is anything further, the Secretariat will be in contact with you and a process will follow from that. We are very, very grateful for your time, for your submission and your evidence today. Thank you.
Great for your time. Thank you very much.
Right, welcome back. Thank you, all of you. Could I please get to each of you to state your name, your position, title, and then swear either an oath or an affirmation? And Mr. Hartley, we'll start with you. Thank you.
Thanks, Chair. Steve Hartley, Executive Director for Resilience and Sustainability at the Department of Planning, Housing and Infrastructure. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you, Chair. David Gainsford, I'm the Deputy Secretary for Development Assessment and Sustainability at the Department of Planning, Housing and Infrastructure. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Louise Mamonie, Executive Director of the Nature Markets and Offsets Division in Biodiversity Conservation and Science in the Department of Climate Change, Energy, the Environment and Water. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. My name's Amy Dunbarrel. I'm the Director of the Biodiversity Offsets Branch within the Department of Climate Change, Energy, the Environment and Water. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. My name's Mick O'Flynn. I'm the Acting Chief Executive Officer of the Biodiversity Conservation Trust. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Does anyone want to make an opening statement?
Yes, we do.
Thank you.
There'll be three, I think.
Okay, great. Please, go for it, in your own chosen order, please.
Thank you for the opportunity to appear before the committee today. And I'd like to acknowledge that we're on the, we're on the Aboriginal land Gadigal here. The bill seeks to reform the biodiversity offset scheme in line with the New South Wales Plan for Nature. The amendments proposed in the bill are the result of many years of review, inquiry and consultation on the scheme, including the review led by Dr. Ken Henry on the Biodiversity Conservation Act and the parliamentary inquiry into the integrity of the biodiversity offset scheme. Throughout these reviews and in regular discussions with stakeholders, as well as practical experience in implementing the scheme, we have closely considered elements that are not working. That consultation has included consultation and stakeholder meetings associated with the Henry review, stakeholder roundtables in developing the New South Wales Plan for Nature and many and regular stakeholder meetings the department holds. I want to thank stakeholders for their contributions and close engagement with DQ over the years and for their submissions to this inquiry. The bill proposes changes to the scheme that are urgently needed. We have in New South Wales a mature offset scheme compared to other jurisdictions and have addressed many of the issues that other jurisdictions are grappling with. We have in perpetuity stewardship agreements which are registered on title of the land. We have funding set aside at the outset to ensure that biodiversity gain on those sites occurs over the long term. We have a functioning biodiversity market with high levels of interest from landholders in participating in that market. Over four hundred and fifty new sites have been identified in the last few years by landholders who would like assistance to participate. We have a sound, repeatable and scalable method for assessing biodiversity that works for the assessment of biodiversity in all its variety in New South Wales for measuring loss and gain. Around four hundred people are accredited to apply that method. We are now seeing a rapid increase in the amount of habitat and ecosystems being restored in the scheme. And we've just tipped over ninety thousand hectares of land that is being protected under biodiversity stewardship agreement. At the recent National Offsets Conference hosted by the EIA NZ and attended by over three hundred and fifty people from across Australia and overseas, professionals, consultants and stakeholders, Professor Hugh Possingham reflected that of all the Australian jurisdictions, the New South Wales scheme was ahead of the pack, although we are beating ourselves up with review after review. And so, we should. It's critical that we get the fundamentals and the practical implementation right if we are to have confidence in offsetting as part of the broader plan for nature and in achieving other critical social and economic objectives. The key components of these reforms are strengthening requirements to avoid and minimise impacts, requiring the scheme to transition to delivering overall net positive and developing a strategy to achieve this. Allowing for the regulations to limit the use of the biodiversity conservation fund so more credits are sourced upfront and ensuring quicker investment in impacted species and ecosystems when the fund is used. Increasing transparency and accountability is key. And finally, allowing for regulatory burden on lower-impact local development to be reduced. Finally, to assist the committee in directing questions, I will briefly speak about DQ's role in the scheme. We accredit assessors who apply the BAM and set the requirements for those accredited assessors. We approve biodiversity stewardship agreements that create biodiversity credits. We have responsibility for public registers and systems for the operation of the scheme and providing support to stakeholders and local government on implementing the scheme. Finally, we support a functioning biodiversity market and have been putting in tremendous effort to increasing the supply of credits and working with landholders. I'll now pass over to my colleagues in BCT and DEFI to do the same.
Thanks. My opening statement is also by way of describing the BCT's role to assist the committee. The BCT has several statutory functions overseen by a board. We have two main roles in the biodiversity offset scheme and they're mostly operational roles. The first role is in providing landholder support, technical advice, monitoring and agreement assurance for stewardship sites once they are approved by DQ. This role includes administering the three hundred and ninety million dollars currently held in the biodiversity stewardship payments fund. These funds are generated by the sale of credits by landholders and are paid back to landholders as annual management payments in perpetuity in accordance with the payment schedule set out in each biodiversity stewardship agreement. Our second role is in securing biodiversity offsets through the biodiversity conservation fund. This includes managing the calculator that determines the amount that developers have to pay into the fund if they choose to do so. With these funds, the BCT secures offsets and buys credits from the market in accordance with the biodiversity conservation regulation and the BCT Board's parameters for doing so. And in this task, the BCT has made some good progress in the last twelve or more months that I'm sure there may be some questions about from the committee. And in delivering our roles in the scheme, we collaborate closely with the Department of Climate Change, Energy, Environment and Water.
Thank you.
Yes, so just very briefly, Chair, thank you. The Department of Planning, Housing and Infrastructure is responsible for assessing major projects. Some projects can impact on biodiversity and are required to comply with the requirements of the Biodiversity Conservation Act, in particular the biodiversity offset scheme prior to being determined. By the end of August twenty twenty four, there were seven hundred and ten major projects within the assessment stages from prepare secretaries environmental assessment requirements to determination, proposing a direct investment of two hundred and two billion dollars for New South Wales. The Biodiversity Conservation Act amendments seek to improve the operation of the biodiversity offset scheme which operates alongside the Environmental Planning and Assessment Act. There are significant interactions between the bill and other government decision-making processes, including under the planning system. The bill proposes a staged commencement. Much of the detail around implementation of the new provisions in the bill are to be established via regulation, which will need to be made before the relevant provisions outlined in the bill commence. The department recognises the importance of the reforms and the objective to make the biodiversity offset schemes clearer and more efficient in its operation. Several elements of the bill significantly interact with planning processes and decision-making, including development assessment. These include front-loading consideration of biodiversity considerations through strategic planning to provide better development certainty and improve biodiversity outcomes and simplification of the biodiversity assessment process where warranted to provide greater transparency and consistency of decisions. The department will work closely with the Department of Climate Change, Energy, Environment and Water to support the changes that achieve a transparent, equitable and fair system that delivers improved biodiversity outcomes and allows for the delivery of housing, renewable energy and critical infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll have a bunch of questions and we'll just kind of flow through them, if that's okay. I might just start with a couple, just one very quickly. I'm just curious, with the ninety thousand hectares under conservation agreements, are they all, is all ninety thousand hectares in perpetuity?
Yes. It includes bio-banking agreements and biodiversity stewardship agreements. So, it does go back to twenty ten.
Yeah, thank you. Earlier today, we heard about variations. And I'm just curious about, you know, and one of the experts at a professorial level who's dealt in the international world and very impressive CV from what I could gather, the question was asked, well, how did this all start, you know, when you have a rules-based system but the system itself is more or less acting or operating on the variations to those rules? How did we get there? So, you know, how do variations happen? Who makes them happen and where in the system do they happen? I'd love to have some insight into that, if that's possible.
Yes, certainly. And I'll start off by explaining that there are two forms of variation rules that are in place. And I'll cover variation rules relating to development projects first and then I'll pass over to Mick to talk about variation rules that the BCT uses for the biodiversity conservation fund. So, yes, you're right. In terms of the biodiversity assessment method, it is assessing projects on ecosystems and the threatened species that occur on those sites as well. And the assessment reports that are produced by accredited assessors describe the impacts in terms of the impact on particular ecosystems and particular threatened species measured in biodiversity credits, which is the unit of measurement that we use. There is a possibility in the legislative framework that when developers come to meet those offset obligations, if they cannot find the credits available to offset those impacts on a like-for-like basis, they can use the variation rules. We're putting in a lot of effort at the moment to increasing the supply of credits and to make sure that there are the right types of credits available in the market to offset the impacts so that the developers can offset those impacts. And we're seeing a lot more of the species credits being created. However, there are these variation rules that are also available. And I'll give two examples of those. So, a variation rule can be used to substitute either a different type of ecosystem credit. And they can also be used for species credits to substitute. So, an endangered, if there is an impact on an endangered animal, then there can be a substitute endangered animal credit used for that. So, that is one. And then also, it also applies for vulnerable species. So, a vulnerable species can be substituted for another vulnerable species.
And so, who set those rules?
That's set through the framework and it's in the regulations. And Mick will explain about the.
So, the Biodiversity Conservation Trust has a separate set of variation rules. It's called the Offset Hierarchy. It's prescribed in the Biodiversity Conservation Regulation. And in that hierarchy, the like-for-like biodiversity credits is at the top of the hierarchy and is always the first consideration. The BCT Board has set more cautious rules than exists in the regulation. For example, we will not consider going outside the like-for-like until after we have twice attempted to secure that like-for-like credit in the market through a market offering. And by further example, if considering a conservation action, which is one of the steps in that, in the hierarchy, we can use, the Board has set a series of parameters and principles that we have to satisfy before we are considering taking such a conservation action. Obviously, if, and as the committee would know, if there isn't, if we aren't able to achieve like-for-like in a timeframe, then timeliness versus the desire for like-for-like becomes a bit of a trade-off for the BCT under the current regime. And by way of just examples, I'll just say that we have, until to date, as of thirty first of August, we have secured eighty-one percent of the credits that we've ever acquitted through like-for-like offsets. And most of the ones that have not been like-for-like, a significant portion of them have been in recent funding of conservation actions through the Saving Our Species Programme.
And in terms of people who actually operate the system and drive it, do you think there would be, do you think it would be a much more straightforward, certain system if we did away with variations? The development industry, for example, and the sector keeps talking about, we want certainty, we want clarity, we want certainty. And I'm just curious, in terms of the operators and the lever holders of the actual machinery, would it be much clearer to just say, no, these are the rules, you play by the rules and these variations actually are the things where all the uncertainty and inconsistency and the to-ing and the fro-ing and the negotiation and the bad faith and the good faith, is that where it all happens? Oh, sorry, a lot of it happens. Sorry, not all of it, yeah.
Look, I think our view is that there does need to be more transparency over the way that the scheme operates in practice. And that's part of the reason that we've proposed additional registers to allow that transparency to occur. Considering, you know, doing away with the variation rules is, you know, something that, you know, is probably worth, you know, considering. But we will, yeah, and we'd look closely at that if it's suggested by the committee. There are, as I said, there are lots of ways in which we probably should be increasing transparency of the scheme and having clear registers which set out the offset obligations and how those offset obligations are being met. Will go a long way, I think, to assuring. Will go a long way, I think, to assuring the public about the operation of the scheme and the outcomes that are being achieved.
I've just got a couple more questions. I'll run through them quickly. I'm just curious about the impact of serious and irreversible impacts, and particularly for state significant development. How do we reconcile that? Like, will the department, and has the department ever, recommended refusal of development because of serious and irreversible impacts? And what threshold does that actually happen?
Yeah, I'll suggest Mr. Gainesmay may respond to this as the decision-maker.
I could see him nodding, ready to go, yeah.
Yeah, so thank you, Chair. So, serious and irreversible impact is obviously something that is taken very seriously in the assessment. And I know there was some previous evidence that was given earlier today around, I guess, you know, a suggestion that that should be, as it is for non-state significant development, something that, you know, should be considered by consent authority as a red flag or something that shouldn't then progress. I think in reality, I'm not aware of circumstances of where we, as a consent authority, have actually agreed to approve a development that's concluded that it had serious and irreversible impacts. We obviously work through often with regard to mitigations to try and reduce impacts where there's the risk of serious and irreversible impact. And I know we're working closely with our colleagues at DQ with regard to, you know, making sure that we've got clear understanding of how serious and irreversible impacts, you know, should be defined. And so, from our perspective, you know, it is something that's definitely taken seriously. And whilst we're doing a merit-based assessment and we need to weigh up various factors, certainly from my perspective, it would be only in very extreme circumstances that I would be recommending to an eventual consent authority to agree to a development that has concluded the serious and irreversible impacts.
So, just on that, sorry, if I can just get a bit of clarity on that. So, to your knowledge to date, have you had assessments that have come to you and said, this will have a serious and irreversible impact on the matter, whatever, you know, on the thing, on biodiversity? Have you had that come to you? And if you have, are you suggesting the response has been, you've then gone to work out how to not have that impact?
I think that's a fair summary, yes. So, there are certainly circumstances of where, as we're undertaking the assessment, as we're sort of developing up our assessment, there is, you know, the ability still to iterate and to look at further mitigations, and also to gather further information around some of the evidence that's being put to us. So, it's through that process that we hope to get to a position where we can conclude, if we are recommending approval for a project not to have serious and irreversible...
But does that not, sorry, I know, I'm just trying to interrogate this aspect of how it works. So then, is it then the case that, okay, so we've got a first assessment that says, look, there will be a serious and irreversible impact here. Does the serious and irreversible impact ever get lessened or more acceptable because an offset can get greater, the offer of a greater offset takes place?
That's one of the avenues. I mean, my colleagues might be better at answering the sort of typical processes of mitigation and offsetting discussions that happen there. Perhaps Dr. Muni?
Yes, so, serious and irreversible impacts are something that are assessed as part of each biodiversity development assessment report, and there are documentation prepared by the accredited assessors to go to the decision-maker on the, on serious and irreversible impacts. We also have a guide published by the Environment Agency Head that sets the requirements for serious and irreversible impacts to be assessed. Those assessment reports, then, there are ways in which impacts on the entities that are identified as seriously, at risk of serious and irreversible impacts, there is mitigation possible, so avoiding essentially the impact. And sometimes offsets are used as well to take away, to reduce the likelihood of a serious and irreversible impact. Is there anything to add further to that?
Just to note that the legislation as it's currently written requires the consideration of additional and appropriate measures if it's looking like a project will have a serious and irreversible impact. So, that's something that we work very closely with our planning colleagues on. If a project is looking like it may have a serious and irreversible impact, we will look through all of those potential options of reducing or minimizing that impact on the impact site, and also look to see if there are other measures that can help support that impacted entity.
Perhaps I can provide an example of a project we've currently got under assessment without necessarily naming the project, because it's something that has occurred in a few different examples recently, of where there's been substantial survey effort associated with this project, but the project itself is a very large project, a long linear project. And so, there has been some parts of the assessment that hasn't been able to be ground truth, and so, there's been, you know, levels of assumed presence, and therefore, some uncertainty around whether there's a serious and irreversible impact. And so, in those situations, you know, some of the additional and appropriate measures are the sorts of things that we would take into account, and we'd obviously, you know, continue to be seeking some advice on the likelihood of serious and irreversible impacts occurring in those situations.
What's the likely, how do you, so people have been talking about, we should have no-go zones, and we should have really good mapping tools, and we should be very progressed at how to identify where these no-go zones are and have them already. What would you say to that if your instructions from government tomorrow was, right, we need that magic map that identifies all the no-go zones and that we can then start reversing the trajectory that we're on for biodiversity loss? How do you, what do you say to that?
Look, I would love to be in that situation. It would be ideal. We do have very good mapping in New South Wales. We have a state vegetation map and, you know, an excellent classification system. Unfortunately, the level of assessment that we need to do for biodiversity is quite granular, which is appropriately granular, looking at, you know, particular species, what is actually on the site. And unfortunately, mapping often doesn't get to that level of detail and the precision that we need to do assessments of if we are trying to identify no-go maps across the entire state. It will be, it will be quite costly, but I would be, I'd be very happy if we were in that situation, that we had that level of information available to us.
I've got thousands more. You go for it, please, Mr. Lawrence.
The Department of Housing, et cetera, people. Is this bill going to delay housing approvals or impact the government's housing targets?
So, thank you, Mr. Lawrence, for your question. Look, from our perspective, whilst I mentioned in my opening statement that, you know, we're still keen to work with our colleagues at DQ around the regulations and the provisions in those regulations, we don't believe so. Certainly, one of the matters that we are considering, I talked again in my opening statement, and perhaps I can defer to my colleague, Mr. Hartley, here, that one of the things that we're, you know, very supportive of in what's being proposed here is the ability to front-load the process and to identify, you know, at a strategic level, the sorts of biodiversity protections that are needed to give some certainty for housing development. That's happened in the Cumberland Plain Conservation area, and it's something that we're looking to expand out some more, and perhaps, Mr. Hartley, you could sort of add to that.
Yeah. And picking up also the theme from Dr. Muni, one of the, one of the elements of the reform package talks about front-loading the development consideration process. Some work that we've done in Western Sydney, the Cumberland Plain Conservation Plan, spent, it was about three and a half years of mapping over around 11,000 hectares of land. And whilst that was a significant effort in terms of undertaking those on-ground surveys, they were sufficient and representative that it was, we were able to make decisions about the best possible conservation outcomes and the best possible locations to deliver housing supply as well. And through that more strategic landscape look, as well as the very detailed site-specific investigations, we're able to provide certainty for investment in conservation, stimulation of biodiversity stewardship agreements, but also provide industry certainty around where development can occur with the least possible biodiversity impact.
Sure, thank you.
The reforms in this bill are not expected to impact the government's housing targets. The scheme doesn't apply where, on land, where there is no biodiversity, such as infill development. I think it's important to remember that. There are some substantial greenfield residential developments that have met their biodiversity assessment requirements, such as the Cumberland Plain Conservation Plan and other plans with biodiversity certification on them. And there are a number of those in regional areas as well. There could be more of those efforts to do certification. There is also regulatory powers to lift the entry thresholds for the scheme for local developments as well. That would need to be done by regulation and will obviously require careful consideration and consultation with stakeholders. And I also note the Urban Task Force suggestion about moving to better consideration of biodiversity upfront and through the rezoning stage as well.
Yeah, sure, thanks for that. So, staying with the Environment and Climate Change Department, can you explain the reasons why the government is introducing a new concurrence power for the Minister for the Environment when the Minister for Planning gives discount to offsets?
Yeah. So, this concurrence power is only for state significant development and state significant infrastructure, so really those really big kind of mega projects that are assessed by And what the intent of the concurrence is to ensure that where the biodiversity offset scheme has been applied and there are supposed to be discounts on either the offset obligations or some other arrangement which is outside of the biodiversity offset scheme, then that is when the Environment Minister should have a concurrence role in it, because the planning approval is also the biodiversity approval.
Sure, thank you. And just lastly, in terms of the new directions power to assessors, can you explain the justification and intent of that being introduced?
Yeah. And I think, as many of the earlier witnesses talked about, the complexity of biodiversity assessment, even despite having a very sound biodiversity assessment method and detailed guidelines and calculators and all the other things that go into templates on how to do assessment, all the things that go into supporting the implementation of those assessments, there can be issues that come up during the biodiversity assessment that require clarification. And we heard earlier about the identification of species polygons, which species occur, where are they? Is it a particular plant community type, or is it another one that looks fairly similar but might have a few differences? Now, the purpose of this power of direction is really to provide clarification upfront in the assessment process, so it will reduce the uncertainties and delays in the assessment if, at the last minute, there is a change in the way that that site should be assessed. The power relates to the assessment of, is contained to requirements that accredited assessors should already be doing. So, the conditions of their accreditation, which includes applying the biodiversity assessment method, but also their code of conduct as well. So, we think it's within the bounds of operation of accredited assessors' current work, but there might be some changes that we can consider further to clarify that. I know the feedback from accredited assessors on it is that they would like for there to be further consultation on it. If I could talk further about accredited assessors too, we have, I mentioned earlier, we have 400 accredited assessors across the state. They undergo training. They're also very experienced ecologists, and we know the important role that they have in the scheme. It's absolutely critical that the assessment reports that they produce are accurate, and that's why we take the role of accredited assessors so seriously. We're not seeing any reduction in the number of accredited assessors, which is good, and we also have a full, we have a number of renewal courses coming up throughout this year, the remainder of this year, and they're all full. So, we're confident that there will continue to be accredited assessors available and really excited to continue to work with those industry groups to resolve some of the issues that they're experiencing with the scheme.
Sure, thank you. Thanks, Chair.
Ms. Mitchell or Ms. Monroe, whoever would like to go first?
We can both go.
Yep. Ms. Mitchell, you go.
Thanks, Chair. Thank you all for your evidence so far. I wanted to ask a few questions just in relation to the evidence that we've had from previous witnesses, both today and when we had our hearing last week. And I wanted to just start with the Country Mayors Association have made some recommendations around effectively looking at parts of the state differently under the scheme, and their argument is that, you know, the Far West is very different to the North Coast, for example. So, they talk about three zones across the state, and also the potential of looking at percentage of land value for the offset process so that you've got, again, more consistency. Would anyone want to offer some comments or views on those recommendations?
I'll attempt to, look, I really value the Country Mayors Association's perspective on the impact of the scheme in different parts of the state. And I've been out to look at some of these sites myself to see what is happening there. The benefits for regional areas of the scheme are quite unique, actually, and very exciting. So, in terms of the application of the scheme to small developments, there is also a fair bit of cleared land in regional areas that can be utilized for development. It's always worth considering, how can we adjust it further to ensure that we're not disincentivizing the wrong, the types of development that should be encouraged? And I've also provided advice to some of the regional developments that need assistance on how can I operate within the scheme more effectively? So, where are the, where are the sources of credits or biodiversity offsets that will be most cost-effective for me, given the cost, the cost factors on regional developments? In terms of regional landholders, there are really good opportunities, and I mentioned earlier, the number of landholders that have been interested in working to establish new biodiversity stewardship agreements and getting paid to manage land for conservation outcomes, manage weeds, pests, maintain fences and restore land. So, some of that is definitely a very kind of positive discussion that we can have in regional areas about working within the scheme. Do you want to add anything further about regional?
Yeah, I might just, thanks. I might just add, and without necessarily commenting on the Country Mayors Association's recommendations directly, one of the things that the government response talks to in the bill and ultimate response looks to deliver is a more strategic process, recognition upfront of the biodiversity values, but also where development is likely to impact biodiversity less and incentivize those sites. And so, I think Dr. Muni's talked about the potential benefit of, the financial benefit potentially for landholders of high-value biodiversity sites. One of the things I think we've done well in some locations is be able to front-end-load the strategic planning process to make it very clear to landholders and those looking to invest where the easier areas might be, where, you know, development, not only from a biodiversity perspective, but from a servicing, et cetera, perspective, might be more appropriately located as well. So, I think there's definitely opportunity to, I love the concept of that magic map. I think there's a real opportunity to use that strategic planning process to the benefit in that situation.
Yeah. I mean, I guess I'd probably just have to follow on a bit, though. One of the things that we did get which was concerning was a number of different sort of development opportunities, housing, and we also heard from the New South Wales Aboriginal Land Council... who said sometimes they want an exemption for their land because sometimes that process and the offset actually just makes any sort of community development for them really just, it doesn't, it doesn't stack up, I guess, in terms of their costs associated. So I do think there is a bit of an impasse here in terms of wanting to have the right structure, but also when we're seeing necessary regional projects not go ahead because it's too costly, whether it's through a local Aboriginal land council or, you know, a council that wants to build, you know, fifty houses in Western New South Wales. I guess that's kind of the tension around how do you make the system work better so that that's avoided? And I don't know if the evidence we've received so far sort of indicates that this will give the solution that we need. Anyway, that's a really question, but I haven't.
I heard a question in there. You mentioned local Aboriginal land councils and the role that those land councils have in economic and social and environmental management within regions as well. We have an Aboriginal engagement strategy. So we are actively working with Aboriginal landholders and through Newswalk. And I know the really thought provoking submissions made by Newswalk and the local Aboriginal land councils as well. We feel very strongly that we need to support the opportunities for Aboriginal people for housing and for economic purposes. There is also an opportunity for Laokes to benefit from the scheme in terms of conservation as well, if that is something that they are interested in doing. And so we are, our engagement strategy is to take a respectful approach to that conversation and to be led by community aspirations on that. But we also need to make sure that those Aboriginal organizations are supported to consider the benefits of the scheme as well. And we are helping to fund some of the assessments required to consider that. And I know the submission from Ms Ruby Dykes talking about their long involvement in the scheme and the work that one of my team members, Mr John Sidle, has undertaken recently to ensure that that site can be getting put into active management by additional survey work to identify more of the species that are occurring on that site. And there are some very exciting outcomes that we're seeing on that site. Obviously a long way to go on all of that.
Yeah, I'd probably, I'd probably reiterate. I've also read those submissions and there's some really interesting commentary in those submissions. And you know, you've absolutely got to recognize the frustration that some Aboriginal people and local Aboriginal councils have expressed. One of the things that we have been working on with one of the local Aboriginal land councils is to try and look at the power of that strategic approach. Often land councils are returned a large number of disparate parcels of land. It can be quite complex in understanding the, you know, the basic zonings of that land, the potential uses, the constraints on that land. We have worked with several land councils actually to try and better understand those land holdings as a parcel and the opportunities for those land holdings, both from an economic activation perspective, self determination perspective and a biodiversity perspective. We have had, started to have some success. And that has been where we have also recognized that information asymmetry and look to provide some good information from which the land councils can make decisions about the holistic holdings as opposed to, I think I saw in one of the submissions, you know, fight on a site by site basis. So we've definitely made some progress on that front, but a long way to go.
Yeah, thank you. Can I just have one more chair and then I'll hand over to Jackie? You might have seen the evidence earlier today from the Ecological Consultants Association. And I know we sort of touched on this a little bit before. But they had some real concerns about effectively, I guess, government agencies being able to direct or issue directions in relation to some of the assessment reports. And they say that it's inappropriate and unethical. They've got some serious concerns about what that would mean in practice. Is there anything that anyone would like to say in response to that?
Yeah, I think, thank you for the question. I do think I probably covered it earlier, but I'm happy to reiterate. The directions powers are to reinforce existing requirements for accredited assessors. So it shouldn't be new things under the code of conduct and under the accreditation requirements, including the biodiversity assessment method. And we're intending that that power to issue directions will be held quite tightly. It's said at the Environment Agency head, it will obviously be quite a serious thing to issue those directions. But we do find that where there is uncertainty in the assessment, that this could be a useful way of resolving that and providing certainty for our, for the accredited assessors, for the proponent and for our department in terms of how the assessment should be carried out.
Thank you, Ms Munro.
Thank you, Chair. My main question follows on from that. We've obviously heard that there are concerns about definitions, the definition of net positive of how the avoid mitigate offset system is going to work. We have obviously had questions about how this accredited assessor direction is going to work. And you spoke earlier about how important regulations have been to actually guide the direction of your operations and how your departments work. Is there a need for regulations to actually be in place side by side with the bill to clarify a lot of these issues that we've heard from multiple stakeholders?
Thank you for the question. Look, the bill provides and does as the Act does, the Biodiversity Conservation Act, a framework for biodiversity conservation and assessment and the biodiversity offset scheme. We, it will be helpful for us for the legislative amendments to be settled so that we know what to include in the regulations. Obviously, we are, you know, turning our minds to potentially what could be included in the regulations. And there will be an extensive process to develop those regulations that will include consultation with stakeholders and the development of a regulatory impact statement being put on public exhibition. So that will likely be next year. But the clarity in having the bill first would be, I think, essential for us to have the certainty to move ahead on that.
So what does that process look like? You say next year, are we talking about like it'll take a year from now for regulations to be in place?
I don't believe it will be a year. Obviously, there are many things that need to occur. You know, we have guidance on how long regulations take. And I would be thinking it will be more like mid next year. But, you know, that's to be determined, I think.
So what happens in terms of the actual operation of the bill? If it passes and becomes legislation, what happens to all the actors in the system in the meantime, while those regulations are actually coming into fruition?
Yeah, so we work closely with stakeholders at the moment on how the scheme's going and how it's to be implemented. And so that will be an ongoing kind of conversation that we'll have with them about the changes that are coming up and what that means. In fact, I think, you know, it's probably a good thing to have some lead in time if the bill is passed by Parliament to consider further and to discuss the detail of the operation. There'll be, there'll be consultation. I think the earlier suggestion of, you know, discussion paper on, for example, on the detail of the regulation would be quite useful. But that is normal regulatory development process. So, and as you would know, most legislation that passes is not implemented on the day, on the day that it passes, that there is often a few months or sometimes longer for it to be implemented. As for example, when the Biodiversity Conservation Act 2016 was passed, it didn't come into effect until the following year, about August 2017.
And are there things that, I mean, what do you need from this bill to provide certainty to your process?
Well, I think the bill provides the framework.
And so is that, can I just ask on that? Is, so just working it sort of backwards now, it's become quite clear that the intent is we need this framework. So then we've got the certainty to then drive the regs and get the regs right with all the participants and the players. But if we don't have the bill, we would be running out there and doing all of these things. And it may all be, it may be a bit in vain because we might end up with a different law or something.
And I might give an example of that, the Biodiversity Conservation Fund. There are reforms proposed to reduce reliance on the Biodiversity Conservation Fund.
I'm going to come to that next.
And I might ask Ms Munro to talk further about how we might proceed on and what we consider there.
Yeah, so absolutely, this bill, if it passes, will give us the ability for the regulations to prescribe the circumstances where the Biodiversity Conservation Fund cannot be used. And without the certainty that that will be part of the bill, we'd be struggling to kind of have that conversation with stakeholders around what those options could look like. With the bill in place, we'll be able to move forward with stakeholders to test a range of options as to how you would reduce that reliance on the fund and look at the, you know, the various kind of market and stakeholder impacts of the different options that are available. And then take a decision back to government as to where those settings are appropriate to be made.
So I suppose some stakeholders have kind of, you know, come with the view that, well, that should be, so those circumstances should be, have already been determined. I, I mean, Henry's view, he made it very clear in quotes, "The integrity of the offset scheme is being compromised by payments in rather than credits being sourced directly." Is there, was there no impetus to kind of just say, right, well, let's stop putting money into the fund for, you know? Was there nothing on that? Or is there a view that the receiving money in the fund without those credits available is still an option?
There are a number of different ways in which we could reduce reliance on the Biodiversity Conservation Fund and that may be one of them. But I think we need to consider the options and in light of how the rest of the scheme is working as well. So yes, that is to be considered. But it is, there is, I think it would be good to have certainty that is something that we should be doing because there is no power to do that currently in the legislative framework.
It's kind of bizarre we got there really, isn't it? You've just got this thing and you can just pop your money in and don't worry about biodiversity. Ms Munro, you had one more question.
I just wanted to follow up because I guess there is a difference between the kind of certainty that each of your departments are looking for. And I just wanted to ask Mr Gainesford as well, is that also your view regarding regulations? Like how does, how do your stakeholders interact with the bill? If it goes into, becomes law, obviously you do have some lead time, but developments obviously take a long time to plan and there needs to be that certainty for people who are engaging with this system. So how do you think about the issue of certainty in that gap between the legislation and the regulations?
Look, I think the only thing I'd add to what Dr Mummuni said before is that, you know, obviously, you know, we do have lots of circumstances where we have draft policies and regulations and legislation that's out there which is sending a signal. And so, you know, obviously with the publication of the Plan for Nature and, you know, if this bill passes, you know, the framework that that starts creating, starts sending some of those signals. So one of the things that, you know, obviously we've already started doing with our applicants and with our industry associations, you know, we've been engaging with them around that work. It's certainly been our interest, as I'm sure it would be in everybody's interest, to, you know, have the regulations settled as quickly as possible, albeit that, you know, that's that balance between making sure that they're well consulted and, you know, the settings are right. So that's probably the only thing I would add there.
Just on the Biodiversity Conservation Fund, there is also the three year deadline for acquittals as well. So there is some reform in the bill itself to ensure that there is faster delivery of offsets.
Is there merit though in the argument that no money should go in unless there's guaranteed the credits available? Is there, clearly there has to be merit in that, is there or?
I can tackle that. It is a legitimate question that we're looking at. I guess the Henry review when it considered looking at that recommendation identified that those decisions need to be made earlier in the planning process. So at the time that you get to an approved development with a condition of consent to retire credits, it's really too late to then restrict that development from being able to proceed because the credits may not be available. So we really, and we've spoken a bit about it today, do that front end loading of the considerations in the planning system. But it is still something we're looking to as to how we can increase that certainty that if a payment is made into the fund, that credits will be available. And that includes through the work we're doing to increase the supply and forecast demand so that it's, the supply is there when it's needed.
We are seeing a lot more supply of credits than has been available in the past, which is a good thing for the market to operate. And that is one of the reasons for why the reduced reliance on the BCF is preferred to ensure that the market really does that heavy lifting to incentivize avoidance and also ensure that true supply and demand is effective, which is part of the Ipart recommendations as well.
We heard, we've heard today about how, you know, that was referred to as gold standard, you know, the Cumberland Plain Conservation Plan and also the reference to those sort of growth centers and the certification process, et cetera. I've just got a scenario and I'm curious if you have any comments on it. And I'm just concerned, well, just if you have any comments. Where I've become aware of a property in the Camden area and the council approved a DA there to clear a large amount of the Cumberland Plain, so the critically endangered Cumberland Plain woodland. And it was for a sort of farming project or a claimed farming project. And there was no offset required for that because the land was biodiversity certified under the growth centers. But then, and that's because apparently non-urban clearing was required to be offset because it was certified. So this was the whole gold standard thing apparently happening. But then, as we understand it, the federal strategic assessment never envisaged that non-urban or agricultural development to form part of the growth centers at all. But now we're seeing that that land, you know, could it now be developed for urban? Because it's now been rezoned for urban. So how does that happen? Is there a safety valve for all of that? Because ultimately you've got clearing of Cumberland Plain woodland under this apparent gold standard that was never offset. And I'm just curious, are you, how do you grapple with that? And is there a way of calculating how much Cumberland Plain or other may have been lost through these apparent gold standard instruments? I'm just.
Yeah, so I probably can't speak to that specific example. It sounds like a growth centers program, so an earlier bio certification.
Yes.
I can talk to the work that's been done more recently under the Biodiversity Conservation Act. And the way I think we've tried to ensure that there's not uncertainty over clearing is to really, you know, it's going back to that mapping question, I think. It's to look across the landscape, have an accurate representation of the vegetation, species habitat and so on within that landscape and then ensure that the planning system reflects appropriate zonings and uses for that land, that including conservation purposes and development. zonings and uses for that land, that, including conservation purposes and development purposes. Speak, I can really, I can't speak to the growth centers work, but under the Cumberland Plain Conservation Plan, for example, there's a singular map that's published that all planning authorities have to refer to. That singular map has the zonings, the uses published, and that goes down to, actually goes down to the sub lot and DP level. So there is no uncertainty under that scheme about what a, what a parcel of land could or couldn't be used for.
So under the previous scheme, it's possible things may have slipped through in terms of that?
I can't, I'm actually just not sure of that one.
It might be worth taking that one on notice to check the specifics of a particular one.
Yeah, and I can provide you a question around it, because it, it is just a real concern about how do we guarantee that things aren't slipping through when we're creating these apparent gold standard plans?
And I might, sorry, Chair, I can just add, again, I can't talk to the earlier example, but Cumberland Plain Conservation Plan, there's the zoning, there's the maps. There's also a number of checks and balances in the system. We work very closely with local councils on the implementation of the planning controls. We review, you know, we do a selective review of how those planning controls have been applied. We do a vegetation flyover every six months, which looks at the extent of vegetation clearing. There's a, within government, two and a half yearly review of the program and an independent five-year review that takes account of, brings together all of that information, not only on the zonings, the clearing, but also the environmental acquisitions and the protection that's been afforded and the development that's been delivered over that period. So we, the scheme tries to build in multiple levels of checking to make sure that circumstance that you seem to have just described doesn't happen.
Right, right. Okay, we have come to the end of our session, and if there were any matters taken on notice, the Secretaryate will be in contact, you know the system, thank you very much. And yeah, we're very, very grateful for your time and your evidence today. Thank you for coming along, and that concludes our session.
Thank you.